I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectment to Order at 7:04 on October 3rd, and I'd like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our agenda is presentation on emergency preparedness and response. And before I go into that further, does anyone have any objections to moving public comment to the end of the presentation? We're just bumping it up there a little bit. Okay, terrific. Okay, so tonight I'd like to begin by thanking the following people for their participation. And we have Chief of Police, Don Anderson. We have Director of Public Works, Ed Gentile. We have Director of Land Use, Jeremy Ginsburg. We have our Director of Health, David Knuff. We have Redness in Need Engineer Consultant Craig Flaherty here this evening. We have Town Administrator Kate Bush, Human Resource Generalist Karen Dunn, and Executive Assistant Linda O'Leary. I want to thank all of those people for working on this. And Emergency Management Director Mark McEwen. Sorry, Mark. One additional person. So Darien was hit hard by two storms last summer. Both the town and our residents suffered significant damages. And tonight we are going to hear from key personnel on lessons that were learned, as well as basic steps that our businesses and our residents can take to protect themselves in advance of future storms. We will review the town's storm action plan, which includes standard practices and maintenance that is done throughout the year. The departments will cover storm, specific storm prep, so that's as an event approaches, mid-storm response, and the aftermath assistance and guidance. We will also receive an update on the flooding studies that were commissioned following last year's events. There will be a lot of information shared this evening, and much of it is actually applicable to more than just flooding emergencies. So the entire presentation will be posted to our website. And I ask you if you have thoughts or questions, to take notes, and we will address those at the end of the presentation. So with that, we will begin with Craig Flaherty.
Good evening. Thank you, Selectmen. My name is Craig Flaherty. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. I'm a senior engineer in principle with the firm of Redness in Need. I have 28 years of experience in civil engineering in Lower Fairfield County specializing with a focus on hydrology and hydraulics, or how water moves over the land. I think I've also been asked here tonight because of my involvement in town government and volunteering for the town over the years. It's gone on 20 years now. I served for seven years on the Environmental Protection Commission, which in addition to the town's wetlands agency and conservation commission, is also the town's flood and erosion control board. An offshoot of my involvement with EPC included chairing our flood mitigation strategy committee for two years after a series of flooding events in 2007, when we did a lot of our studies and analysis of our major waterways. Currently, as it may be somewhat secondarily related, I'm the Chair of the Town Super Commission. Before I get into my slides, I would say, as we were preparing for this meeting, it was really before the events of the weekend had passed, and we saw what happened in Florida. And I think it's worth acknowledging, as we acknowledged last year, that if you are on a property that experienced flooding, or your home experienced flooding, or business experienced flooding, or it was nearby, that can be a very stressful event, a very scary event. And certainly, some people were in very dangerous situations, and thankfully, our emergency services operated as well as they always do to keep everybody safe. But certainly, it is something to acknowledge. Thankfully, we do not live in a community as exposed to some of the communities we've seen pictures of in Florida. But we are going to be talking about a lot of the same things. We'll be talking about coastal flooding, we'll be talking about rainfall flooding, and we have to remember that, at the end of the day, these are real impacts on real people and real communities, and it's not just theory. That being said, I'm going to give you some of the theory behind what's been happening with flooding. So the first thing to point out, as you all know, is that we are a coastal community. Because we are a coastal community, there are two kinds of flooding. And the other thing I should say is, much of my comments I've said in other public forums and presentations, so for people that have been following along, it may sound familiar. Refreshers are always good, but for the folks that may not have caught these comments in the past, it's kind of good to give this precursor, and that's really my part of the presentation tonight. So we have two kinds of flooding. We have coastal flooding, and we have river flooding. They're really driven entirely by different mechanisms. And so you see up on the slide right now, the picture at the top is Pear Tree Point Beach being inundated during a coastal flood, and the picture at the bottom is off of Ledge Road at Stony Brook Park. See how large Stony Brook gets in intense rainfall events. But the drivers of coastal flooding are listed. The tides, right? We can see coastal flooding on a sunny day, because it's a monthly spring tide, or it's an annual high tide, and those can depart by two or three feet over a normal average high tide. But really, the main driver of coastal flooding is wind. And how that affects us here in Darien has to do with the geography of Long Island Sound. So when you get a counterclockwise cyclonic storm, like a nor'easter hurricane, or a remnant of a hurricane, the wind blows in a counterclockwise direction around that storm. So if it's coming up the coast, off-coast, as it approaches, the wind is going to be blowing from the west to the east, from Rhode Island towards New York. And when it does that, it's pushing water up Long Island Sound. And that can drive a storm surge into the western reaches of Long Island Sound. In fact, if you look carefully at a map of Long Island Sound, it narrows at the end. And that actually exacerbates that storm surge as it pushes up Long Island Sound. In fact, the elevation of our coastal flood zones here on the western edge of Long Island Sound are about four feet higher than the elevations of the coastal flood zones on the eastern edge of Long Island Sound. So wind is a huge component of coastal flooding. You get some reaction to low-pressure surge, kind of the straw sucking up the ocean, because you've got low pressure with storms, but that's not a main driver. But certainly, over time, what makes these coastal storms more dangerous, these coastal surges more dangerous, is the fact that sea level is rising. It has risen, and it's predicted to continue to rise, so that's just going to exacerbate coastal flooding. And then the second type of flooding we have in Darien is, well, and there's localized flooding as well, so there's other types, but is driven by rainfall, right? This is river flooding. And again, different mechanisms cause river flooding than coastal flooding. And the primary driver is rainfall amount. Starts with how much water is falling out of the sky, and we'll talk about that in-depth during my presentation. The more water that falls out of the sky, the more water is trying to get down that river valley. But watershed characteristics play a big role, and these can be incredibly varied across different watersheds: small watersheds, large watersheds, steep watersheds, flat watersheds. These all drive a different rate and timing and severity of, and depth of flooding in those river systems. Soils play a part. If there's sands and gravel, and they absorb a lot of water, not a lot of water's going to run off. If there's silty soils or compact soils, a lot more water is going to run off. Surface cover, we spent a lot of time talking about in the land use world, because you're usually taking a vegetated surface and covering it with some hardscape or impervious surface. So surface cover plays a role. Obviously, a woodland or a meadow absorbs a lot more water than a parking lot or a building, where most of that water runs off. And that gets into our stormwater management regulations, which Jeremy will get into a little bit tonight as well. So that all tries to funnel down into a river of a certain size, width, depth, and slope, and a floodplain of a certain width that may or may not be developed, or have houses or structures in it. And these all are mechanisms and involved in how we look at the flooding in rivers. So that was the major point of this slide, is there's two different things. And so if you think in the past, we had Sandy and Irene in 2011 and 2012. Those were primarily coastal flooding events, although they were both hurricanes or remnant of hurricanes. They didn't drop a lot of rain near us, and so there was not a related amount of river flooding. Last year, we had two remnant hurricanes in Elsa in July, and Ida in September, but they did not cause coastal flooding largely. They were rainfall events. They caused a lot of localized flooding, flash flooding, and river flooding. So we talked about rainfall, and this slide talks about rainfall. This set of exhibits, excuse me, is from the Fourth National Climate Assessment, which was published in 2018. And this is a backward-looking analysis at how rainfall has changed over time. And it is no more complicated than hundreds or thousands of rain gauges being read over a century, and that data then being statistically analyzed. And this particular slide, and this particular statistic focuses in on particularly intense rainfall events. So it's the heaviest 1% of rainfall events that occur, and focuses on how much rain falls out of the sky during those particularly heavy events. And what was found by looking at the record was since between 1958 and 2016, the amount of rain that falls out of the sky when we get those big storms is 55% greater over that 60-year period. So there is a documented increase in the amount of water that's falling out of the sky in these biggest storms. And then we go to the next slide. And this is the projection for the future, right? So there's a lot of folks working on climate analysis, and they look at many different models. This is the one that was chosen to be published in the climate assessment, in a carbon scenario, the higher scenario, without little action. We can expect, again, over the course of this century that we're in, to see another 40% increase in those heaviest storms. So these are big numbers. And these big numbers show you why what happened last year happened. So there's a lot of information on this slide. Sorry for putting a spreadsheet in the PowerPoint presentation. It's available on the website if you want to take a closer look. But we have rain gauges here in, we had rain gauges, thankfully, here in town during the two rainfall events last year. We have a rain gauge right here on the roof of Town Hall, and that's the data that I've gotten and synthesized into this particular spreadsheet. So there's two blue columns indicated. Elsa, the July storm, is the first blue column on the left, and Ida, the September storm, is the blue column in the fifth column over, towards the right. And this table takes a look at the most intense time periods during these storms. So the row that says 15-minute is the most intense 15 minutes of the storm. The row that says 30 minutes is the most intense 30 minutes of the storm, and 1 hour, and 2 hour, and on and so forth. So just starting at the top, we see that during Elsa, .56 inches, half an inch, of rain fell in the most intense 15 minutes. We can look at that dataset analysis of backward-looking rainfall, and we know that that's not really unusual, that is probably something that's going to happen more frequently than once a year. So it's got 100% probability of occurring in any given year. So when we talk about an average recurrent interval, 1-year storm, or 25-year storm, or 100-year storm, you've heard those terms, that's just a way to colloquially describe, I have a tough time with that word, describe, describe the probability of recurrence, right? So a 1-year storm has a probability of occurring in any given year of 100%. And a 100-year storm has a probability of occurring in any given year of 1%. So a 100-year storm is also a 1% chance of occurring in any given year. So we saw Elsa at .56 inches in a 15-minute period. Ida had 1.37 inches in a 15-minute period. You go down the line, the 1-hour interval during Elsa, we had 1.89 inches of rain, almost 2 inches. During Ida, we had 3.3 inches of rain, which by all measures was off the charts. No weather recording station in the area had ever seen really more than 2 inches of rain in 1 hour, and here, all of a sudden, we had a storm that generated more than 3 inches of rain in an hour. All the way down the line, you look at the bottom, usually we're modeling 24-hour storms when we're thinking about river system flooding. Both of these storms produced about the same amount of rain in a 24-hour period, close to 7 inches. It's just that when you look at the timing, Ida produced that amount of rain in about half the time that Elsa did. So the rate of rainfall matters, because the more rain that falls out of the sky more quickly, the more of it's trying to get down the rivers and into our culverts and into our catch basins. But you look at some of these probabilities out on the right during Ida, 3.3 inches of rain in an hour is something that had never been observed before in 150 years of rain gauge monitoring. So it was, in our current statistical analysis, it's considered a 500-year storm for that time period. In other words, it has a .2% chance of occurring in any given year. So we can look at that and take some solace, that this was a rare event, but given the prior two slides, we have to take that with a little bit of a grain of salt, because increases have been happening, and increases are projected to happen. So the statistical analysis here is based on backward-looking data, not on forward-looking data. You know, no systems in any municipality, in any state, are designed for a 500-year storm. You know, culverts that were designed and built in the '20s, '30s, '40s, '50s might have been designed for a 10- or 25-year storm at that time. And the rates of rainfall that they used at that time are different and lower than the rates of rainfall we use today. So, you know, our typical systems are undersized. We are using more conservative storms now. We are using the latest rainfall data now. So new systems are certainly more robust than old systems, but you just, you know, you don't design things for a 500-year storm. You make sure at that point, things are going to be overflowing. You make sure they get off the surface of the earth, hopefully, without damaging property. But, and they're rarely going to be contained. So to kind of summarize on that, why is it flooding so much? It seems to be happening more and more. People certainly are concerned about it. We should first remember that river flooding is a natural phenomenon. It happened before the Europeans came to this continent and started to change land use. River valleys flood. Channels themselves tend to naturalize around a 2- to 5-year storm, because that's what's kind of frequently going through the channel and creating that eroded space for the water to flow. But it is normal in these heavier events for floodplains to be flooded and have over-channel flow. But human impacts certainly have made it worse. We talked about increased rainfall being one of the primary drivers. Certainly, there has been historic development in and near wetlands and floodplains. So if you think about the fact that Darien was developed for 200 years before there were stormwater regulations, before there were floodplain regulations, right? Stormwater regulations started in the '60s or '70s, kind of became codified in the '80s. Floodplain regulations became codified in the '80s. So it's really only the last 40 years that we've actually had regulations to make sure that we were developing in a way that considered these things. But we have 200 years where that wasn't happening, where people built near rivers and then near wetlands, sometimes in wetlands. And a lot of those structures are the structures that are currently at risk. Thankfully, we have very stringent regulations now. Since 2010, we adopted a stormwater management regulation that is one of the, if not the most stringent in the state, because it requires any significant redevelopment of a piece of property, not close to a release point, to mitigate the stormwater running off of those sites to a point that it emulates an undeveloped or fresh meadow condition, as the term is now developed. And similarly, in 2013, the town proactively remapped two of our major river systems, the Goodwives River and the Stony Brook River. We applied to FEMA. We had FEMA change the risk assessment maps, because we had better, more accurate information that indicated that the risks were higher, and that's what we did in 2013. So we do have appropriate regulation now, and some of the strictest around. Certainly, when watersheds get developed, that creates more runoff, which exacerbates the problem. And I already talked about the idea that culverts themselves aren't designed for rainfall events like the ones we saw last year. So this slide, again, there's a lot of information on here, but if you take the context, it's to review the work that we did between 2008 and 2011 that led to these map changes in 2013. We hired a consultant. Well, first, we flew new topographic maps for the entire town at a 1-foot interval to get more accurate data. Then we hired a consultant to study three of our major river systems. The Stony Brook was the first one, the Goodwives was the second one, Rotten River was the third one. And really, when we went into it, we went into it with the attitude of, we can fix this, we can make a difference, we can change things, you know? We can put people on the move, we can change the river system, we can make this happen. And so not only did they reevaluate the severity of the existing condition based on some real-world evidence of floods that happened in 2007, but they studied dozens and dozens of different modifications we could make to the river channel and the floodplain to try to improve flooding conditions in some of our worst-hit areas in these river system floodplains. And, you know, this was one example pulled out of that report. Like I said, there's dozens. It shows the stem of the Stony Brook between the Post Road and Renshaw Road, just right over here, and the types of changes that were being considered in the modeling. So take the width of the channel, widen it from 10 or 12 feet to 30 feet. Take the east side of the channel, instead of having a vertical wall, pitch it back and have a slope. Required easements on a dozen different properties, it required demolishing at least one home and one garage, and taking bits of yard all along. It envisioned new bridges at Renshaw Road. It envisioned a bunch of other improvements downstream. So this was millions, if not tens of millions of dollars' worth of work. Let's see what the difference is. And the difference is indicated in the charts on the left. So the cyan line at the bottom says G, which is cross-section G. And so if we go to row G on the left, in the 8B alternate, which I just described, the difference in the flood elevation before and after those improvements was less than 4 inches. So what we learned was, we just couldn't, we couldn't make a difference. Or the cost of making a difference wasn't meaningful to the area properties, or the cost of making a difference was, you know, well outweighed on a cold basis the value of the real estate involved. So we turned our focus to a couple of things. One, towards improving localized drainage conditions in neighborhoods, which Ed will talk a little bit more about tonight. We've done a couple already, and they're in the middle of a bunch more. And the idea that really what has to happen in the floodplains is property-by-property resiliency. They need to come into compliance with floodplain standards. Or what we recommended is that the town participate in the FEMA program that seeks to remove structures from the floodplain that are multiple loss candidates and high-risk candidates. And we've now done that twice, I think, where, and helped the homeowner with the process and the paperwork and the documentation. They were able to get grants for 75% of the value of their home from FEMA, and then the town kicked in the other 25%, bought the property, demolished the structures to the ground. Now, these are people that will never live there in the future, and that will be not at risk. And that is, the, you know, over time makes sense, right? You develop a green system adjacent to these riskiest watercourses. I think, oh, and the last slide I have is how do I know my risk level, and whether I'm not in a floodplain? And I've given three options. One is straight to the FEMA website. And again, I think if you type any of these things into any web browser, you'll get to the right place. And you can search each one of them by address, and you can choose the version that's easiest for you to manipulate and understand. Obviously, the first location is FEMA, because that's the regulatory map, that's where the regulatory maps are based from. That's whether or not you need flood insurance, that's the regulatory floodplain. So you can figure out if you're in a floodplain by going there. A very kind of simplified version of that, if you have a residential property, is to go to a website called Flood Factor, and it'll just give you a 0 to 10 rating on your flood risk. So that just gives you a little brush, and maybe if you're 0, you can sleep a little easier. If you're 10, you might want to do a little more research. And then the town maintains a geographic information system, a GIS system, and continually updates the data available on it. And you can find that at Darien CT Map Geo, and turn on the flood layer. The nice thing about the town's one is you can have the ground elevations, the topography on at the same time as the flood map. So you can actually get a relationship between the elevation of the flood and the elevation of the ground to understand depth. So that could be helpful to some folks. And I guess I'll wait for questions at the end.
So next, we'll have our Chief of Police, Don Anderson.
Good evening, folks. Don Anderson from the Police Department, as always, happy to be here. From the Police Department's perspective, you know, we're generally generalists, because we're there 24 hours a day, right? Someone calls town government, they know they're going to get a voice at the end of the phone on the Police Department. And that certainly comes into play during storm events such as this. What the Police Department does for preparedness for storms of this magnitude is we start to monitor these storms well before they may come here. It's like the storm in Florida last week. We were already monitoring that storm on the off-chance that it would impact our area and get here. So we do very closely monitor storms coming up the east coast, just, and hope it doesn't come here, but we have some advance notice if it does. I think most folks know, the Board certainly knows, we use the Code RED system to notify our residents in timely fashion. And the best thing about the Code RED system is that it is accurate information. If you're getting information via Code RED, it is going to be accurate. It's not going to be somebody's Twitter feed, it's not going to be what somebody thinks is going to happen here. It's proportionate, it's accurate, and it's timely. And this is why you may not get as many Code Reds as some people might like, because we don't like to be crying wolf or having the sky falling when it's not. So when you get a Code RED update, it will be accurate, it will be timely, and it will be proportionate to the emergency that we think might be coming down the pike. I think most people know, the Board certainly knows, we have the Emergency Operations Center here in Darien, which is headquartered at the Police Department. If anybody's ever seen seen it in operation. But in our second-floor training room, we have the ability to set that Emergency Operations Center up, so the following departments and folks are represented: the First Selectment, Police, Fire, EMS, Emergency Management, Public Works, Building, Health, Human Services, Public Schools, EverSource, and the Red Cross. So there is a station for each and every emergency department at the table there. Phone, computer hookup, we're ready to go. And the good thing that Darien really does well is that the folks that are in that room in the Emergency Operations Center work on a first-name basis. You're not meeting any of those people when the crisis starts, you already know those people, you work with those people on a regular basis, and you're elbow-to-elbow with them to address issues as they come up. There's no having to call somebody because that person's in the room from those organizations. That's very important, and it works very well. We do have the ability to open the Emergency Operations Center, we can call it remotely, where there's not someone sitting there. We can open it virtually and have it open and ready to go, and there may be one or two people in there monitoring the storm or the event, and as it ramps up, we can get people in quickly there. So when the state opens their Emergency Operations Center, we sometimes open our Emergency Operations Center virtually until we find that we need it in person. So the Police Department, what we do when a storm is coming or an emergency event is coming, we ensure all our equipment is fully operational and ready for deployment. Per our general orders and just general utility and readiness, we test all our gas-powered equipment every week by our general orders. So our light towers, our generators, they're all tested weekly to make sure that they're ready to go. So we're ahead of the game when it comes to that. People probably know that the Police Department is self-sufficient. We can operate on our generator for probably a week or more, and we do have relationships with diesel suppliers that if we need additional diesel, we'll get a diesel drop when we need it to ensure that the Police Department can continue to operate. When we had the building done in 2011, the generator that was put in there, they told me that that generator could probably operate a quarter of the town. So we're very robust when it comes to power to ensure that we're up and running twenty-four hours a day, even when everyone else might be out. We have light towers, we can deploy them into areas, gas-powered light towers, so if we need to light up a particular area, emergency operation scene, we can do that. We do utilize software in our communications center that is accessed by Fire and EMS, so we have roadway closures, trees down, wires down. We can have almost real-time notification on when these things are in place, what roads are open, what roads are closed. In every one of these storms, we make a little bit more headway to make sure that this is operating optimally, right? It's never perfect, but we do chip away at it to ensure that everyone that needs to know when roads are open or closed has accurate information. We load up our patrol vehicles when a storm is, you know, impending. That means extra road flares, barricade tape, medical equipment, other emergency supplies are put in there so we don't have to restock or we don't have to come back to headquarters in the event that we have to deploy things of that nature. In addition, we put barricades out where we know flooding tends to occur. We pre-deploy those barricades so we don't have to truck them out there. Once the storm happens, they're already there. And the most important thing on barricades and road tape, if you see road tape or barricades, it's there for a reason. I can assure you that we didn't forget to take the tape down, or we didn't remember to come get the barricade. If it's there, that road is blocked for a reason. There are either live down wires behind it, or the roadway is impassable for trees and/or wires. We do very, very well on getting these roads open as soon as we can, but if the barricade's still there, please do not go by it, especially downtown under the railroad underpass. You know, I've been here for a lot of storms. My first storm here was Gloria, and I don't think I got dry until 1990 after that one. So I have, I've only had to swim out and save somebody once, but I have waded into waist-deep water to get people out of cars under that railroad bridge on a regular basis. Now, you can, to me, I can see it looks like Lake Erie, but folks are still driving into it sometimes around the barricades. And we take our stuff off and we wade out in there and help them get out. Craig, I think, explained it very well, but the water under that bridge, water seeks its own level. There's nowhere for that water to go, because if it's going into the Goodwives River that's already at that level, guess what? The water's not going anywhere until the water recedes, so. I know it's inconvenient, but certainly do not drive under the railroad bridge when those barricades are there. What we do as far as staffing, we notify our personnel early on that they're gonna be subject to order in or order to remain, right? This is what we do at times of emergency, this is what we do. So you may have to stay past your shift, you may have to catch a cat nap in between shifts in our bunk room or in your car, or the shooting range sometimes when it's not in operation, it's fairly quiet and dark, and you can get a nap in there as well. Calls for service, again, a lot of this is managing expectations. I think we do a pretty good job of ensuring that if we think evacuation is required, we get that message out there, but there is some time when the police or fire or EMS cannot get to you at some point in a storm, that we pull our people off the road as well because the danger is such, it's safer in headquarters. And we don't like it, we certainly don't like when someone calls and we have to tell them we can't get to you. And I know what's happening for some residents when a tree falls through their roof. This is a life-changing and altering event for them. However, you might be a third or fourth phone call of a tree falling through somebody's roof, and if there's nobody hurt there, there may be other calls for service that are prioritized that we have to go to first. We try to get to every life-threatening emergency. If that means trudging through the woods to get to your house, we will make every effort to do so, but there are some occasions when we can't get to someone. We try to keep that to a minimum. So really, police response, you know, is predicated on the particulars of the event. We may be directing traffic at a downed tree on the Post Road, and five minutes later, we're delivering a baby. You know, that's just the nature of our job, that we're ready to respond to everything and anything that we can to get to. But when you call the Emergency Operations, we don't get the Emergency Operations Center. When you call the Communications Center, we may, the dispatchers in there may be dealing with five, six, seven, nine-one-one calls simultaneously in a major storm. The good thing is, we have almost unlimited nine-eleven lines, so you will get through eventually, but they may be dealing with emergencies and can't get to every call within three or four or five rings. Another important thing in a storm is, please call nine-one-one only for life-threatening emergencies. We don't know, we're not holding back information on when the power is going to come back on. We don't have the magic eight ball or the crystal ball from the power company to say, "Your power will be back on at X o'clock." If we had that, we'll give you our best guess, our best estimate on what they tell us, but we don't flip that switch and turn the power on and off. So routine calls for service, we ask that, if at all possible, you don't call the Emergency Communications Center during that time for emergencies, certainly, and we will address them to our best ability and as timely as we can. There are some calls that are non-emergency in nature that do get queued up, and it may be quite some time before we get there, you know? Barking dog, or, you know? It may take a little while for us to get there during a storm. But surprisingly, we have had people walk into our lobby in the middle of these major storm events and report previously occurring criminal activity that we now have to investigate, even though it happened three or four or five days earlier. So during a storm, we had a resident come in and report a domestic family violence situation that had occurred a week before involving a gun that we now have to immediately address. And during the hurricane, we served a search warrant on the house to get the gun, and we found three hand grenades in the bedside drawer that were getting the gun out. So imagine during a hurricane, when all the power's out, we have to have a bomb tech, and we have to have people doing this. So it does happen that during these storms, people still need other police services, and we typically have sufficient staff to handle that, but just help us manage things that can we. We will get to them, but during this major storm, usually we're hopping pretty good, just trying to keep the roadways safe and the residents safe here the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, next, we have our Health Director, David Knuth.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank you for pulling this together. The timeliness of this in light of what's happened in Florida is extraordinary. So I think that we have all learned by watching what's happened in Florida, and we can apply some of that stuff, I hope, as we go forward in being prepared locally. So as Chief said, prior to an extreme event, an extreme weather event or an emergency, we will start talking, watching the weather, and if conditions warrant, we'll open the Emergency Operations Center, and the Health Department is part of that. And what is our role? Our role is basically to help provide for guidance to the public and to town officials on food safety, water, sewage disposal. We can get involved in air quality issues, flood cleanup. So we're involved in the preparation before the storm, during the storm, we assess our staffing abilities to go out and inspect if we can prior to. We'll go out, and we actually have developed a pamphlet for restaurants to prepare for power outages and extreme weather conditions, emergencies of all types. So, you know, and we'll make sure that places that are subject to flooding, we know who they are, we'll get this information, and even other places that aren't, we'll get information to them as well, how to prepare, because you never know when you're gonna have a power outage, and you don't know how long it's going to last. So there are things that can be done to prepare for food service facilities. So one thing that I really think is really, we did learn from Florida, is that if folks are told to evacuate, you need to take that guidance to heart. I mean, because if the storms really get to the extent where they were, Sanibel Island and Captiva, not to say that we have situations like that, but if you're told to evacuate, you better go because you may not be able to be saved in those conditions that occur. You know, one of those crazy storm events, you know, twelve inches of rain in a very short period of time, we're going to have serious impacts from that. So if we know that there's a bad storm coming, we need to be ready. And by that, you also prepare. How do you prepare? Well, you're gonna need to get an emergency supply kit if you're gonna stay home, and if you feel you can stay home to weather perhaps an extended power outage. So get a kit that includes items such as food, water, utensils, change of clothes, blankets, pillows, toiletries, battery-powered radio, blankets, batteries. Make sure you have the medication and medical supplies you need, and get some boots. Be walking around in that water, floodwaters, rubber gloves, and make sure you have bleach sanitizer on hand. You never know what you're gonna need that for. But always follow the instructions from the authorities if you're told to evacuate, because again, as extreme conditions occur, it may make it impossible for anybody to get there to rescue you. With respect to food safety at home, power outages, you should have three to seven days of non-perishable, shelf-stable food. Also have a can opener, because if you lose power, you don't want to just have an electric-plug-in can opener. You know, have a hand, the old-fashioned can opener. And make sure that wherever you store your food, you have it protected from any potential floods, floodwaters. Before the storm, if you think, you know, we may have power outages, quite likely we will, set the refrigerator and freezer at the lowest temperatures. Try to stock up, get some ice, fill up your freezer. Freezers keep things frozen for a longer period of time if they're full. But once perishable food has been over forty-five degrees for more than two hours, it should be discarded and not consumed. And any food that's subject to floodwaters also, just throw it out. So the bottom line is, when in doubt, throw it out. These are not the times when you want, when in doubt, throw it out, you know? You don't want to have this be a time when you get food sickness, right? And as far as drinking water, keep seven days of water, fresh drinking water, potable water, in clean plastic containers available in advance of the storm. Stock up, get some water. If you have a well, fill your bathtub with water for flushing toilets, two reasons. One is if you're on a well, you have a pump, and if the power goes out, you won't have water coming out of your tap. On the other is to just ensure you have the water, to be able to flush toilets. We'll get to the flushing toilets issue, too. If you have a well with a casing that extends above grade, make sure you understand what the grading is around it, because if that's subject to flooding or floodwaters, you don't want to drink the water in your well if it's been flooded, because the surface water will get into it. And surface water and floods contains all kinds of stuff, which we will also get to. So if your well is flooded, has been covered, it's underground, not so bad because it's really not flooded, but if the casing itself is above ground, it's subject to water getting inside. Don't drink the water until the well is properly disinfected and the water's tested by a private laboratory. Municipal water should be safe, but it's not always. Something happened in Jackson, and right now, they're having problems in Florida with the municipal waters as well. But municipal water should be safe unless you notice discoloration associated with flooding. Any advisories or boil water notices we would issue through Code Red. So make sure you sign up for Code Red, that's really important, so you can get these notices. If you need to, if you're in a spot and you need to disinfect water, if you have some drinking water, boil the water for a minute, let it set. Now, if your power is out, and you don't have gas, natural gas, and you want to do something different, half a teaspoon in five gallons of water is adequate for disinfecting water. I mentioned sewage disposal, it's another issue. In the event of a power loss, any home that's got a pump, whether it's for pressure sewer systems or for your septic system that's on a pump, a lot of septic systems have pumps, you have to realize there's not a lot of capacity for water if you're using water in the house if you need a pump. So unless you have a generator. If you have a generator, I guess, you know, you'll be okay. But if you don't have a generator, you can't just dump water down in your toilet and keep flushing your toilet, because there's not a lot of capacity for that water within your tanks. So you could end up with a different kind of problem in the house if you're using too much wastewater associated with a home that's got a pump. So if you have a pump for sewage, don't flush. General safety and carbon monoxide. Every time there's a power outage, we have issues with carbon monoxide poisoning, and that's across the board. It's not okay to run your generator in the garage with the doors open. That's not a good idea. They have to be outside, and they should be at least twenty feet away from the house. And under any circumstances, running a generator, even underneath the porch or patio, it's gotta be away from the house, because you don't know which way the wind's blowing. It could blow the carbon monoxide in the house, and carbon monoxide is colorless and odorless, and you won't know. In fact, what happens is people get sleepy, so you don't even know they're being poisoned by carbon monoxide. Don't use your gas oven to heat your house. I mean, a lot of these things are logical, right? But you know what? It happens all the time. And don't use a grill inside, whether it's a gas grill or, you know, a charcoal grill. And again, you know, every time there's extended power outages, there are carbon monoxide calls, and our fire department can certainly verify that, and Police Department. Floodwaters themselves. You know, every time we get over an inch of rain in town, we close the beaches. And that's because we have determined that every time we get an inch of rain, bacteria ends up being washed into the beach, and we close the beaches for swimming. So that's an inch of rain. We're talking flooding here. Flooding's gonna contain a whole bunch more than just the bacteria that we're talking about that close our beaches. So keep that in mind. Floodwaters contain lots of bacteria and lots of- Floodwaters contain lots of bacteria and lots of other things. They're scouring and washing a surface off of everything that's out there. So, you really shouldn't be wearing flip-flops in floodwaters. You really should wear boots, okay? You know, you really need to wear gloves, rubber gloves. This is not just clean beach water that we're dealing with here. It's not just rainwater. It's floodwaters, and it contains a lot of stuff. And we have a lot of information about how to disinfect in your properties, but anything that's absorbent, sheet rock, insulation, books, clothing, you know, a lot of that stuff, you can't really adequately sanitize and disinfect. So, really, a lot of that needs to be just disposed. And you can sanitize a hard surface that's non-absorbent, yes, that can be done, but we recommend that a service be done, be contracted to do that, recognizing that in times of flood, there may not be a lot of people available to do that. So, that's why I said at the beginning, make sure you have bleach on hand, because then you can make your own disinfectant. You have your boots, you have your gloves. Protect yourself, protect your family, be prepared, and have the supplies you need prior to a flood or an extended power outage. So, and finally, the last thing I really want to stress is, in your zeal to make disinfectants, don't ever mix chlorine bleach with ammonia. It's deadly. So if you're trying to, you know, somebody's making one type of disinfectant, somebody's making another, don't do that. Only work with one or the other. It's deadly. So, just want to kind of summarize a couple of things. If you're told to evacuate, in the event of a flood, do it, because we may not be able to get there to get people out. When in doubt, throw it out. If the food's been in the refrigerator for a few days, forget it. I know we might be getting hungry in an extended power outage, but you know, we'll make do. Drinking water, make sure you have drinking water on hand. And always have the bleach, the boots, and the gloves, rubber gloves. You have a pump, sewage, don't flush, because it may end up in your basement. Again, carbon monoxide, what can I say? No generators in the garage, please.
Thank you, David.
Hopefully, we won't have anything quite like what just happened in Florida, or a repeat from last year, but we do have to be ready. And I'm happy to be part of this discussion to show how the Town of Darien is ready to respond to the situations that may present us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have our Emergency Management Director, Mark McEwen.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you on a nice occasion, a little bit of rain, not too much. I just want to point out the Stony Brook watershed in 1962. To some of you, those pictures may look very similar. That's the backside of Cherry Street, and that's Renshaw Road just outside the window Flooding has been going on a long time. And what I'd like to talk about tonight is what residents need to know about flooding and reporting their damage. Most importantly, always contact your insurance company first, and always, don't ever, because you think you don't have coverage, not make the phone call, because FEMA will require it, and they need to know that it was denied. Communication, it's important to have your insurance company's phone number available to you. In many instances, in emergencies, whether it's a fire or a flood, many people don't have access to the paperwork, sometimes the paperwork's lost in the event itself. So I would recommend putting your insurance company's phone numbers in your cell phone, and also the policy number, so that you can make your claims when you need to. Document damage, it's always important to inventory your home. I know you probably heard this from your own agents, if you've ever dealt with them, but, you know, take pictures, videos, et cetera, before anything ever happens, and more importantly, after it happens, make sure you document the damage with photographs. Keep all your receipts. It's important to keep everything you do regarding your cleanup, your repairs, your replacement items. You can scan or photograph them on your cell phone, and it makes it quick and easy, so when you need them, you have them. Cleanup should always occur after your adjuster views the damage. Many of you may have flood insurance, so you may be dealing with an insurance adjuster. Don't proceed anything until the adjuster gives you the clearance to do so, and I would recommend getting that in writing regarding cleanup and repair. But most importantly, when you go to throw debris out, make sure you document your debris, whether it's clothing, or it's family items, whatever it may be that you're picking up out of your basement floor, or wherever, and getting rid of. That's all things that you need to inventory. And then after reporting to your insurance company, and after receiving a message from us, usually on Code Red, we also go to the media with it, we may ask for damage reports. And those damage reports are very important for us to send to the state of Connecticut, and also onto FEMA, when that's, decoration has been made, and the email address is there on the slide. The slide presentation's available later. Many people have already done this in the past, so it's a good refresher. One thing about floods, it's the most common and deadliest natural disaster in our country and the world. Darien has experienced 510 insurance losses between 1978 and 2016. I know in 2018, and also this past year, we had multiple floods as well, that aren't accommodated in these statistics. The majority of homeowners find out the hard way they don't have coverage for flood-related losses. Water going over the earth is usually exempt from your insurance coverage. So you need flood insurance. And it can be purchased from a private carrier, but in most situations, it's bought through the National Flood Insurance Plan Program, which was started in 1968, and that's in 95% of the policies out there. Darien had 608 residential flood insurance policies with an average premium of $1,482, and that covers less than 10% of our homes and businesses. I point that out because one thing that we all have heard walking the streets, and dealing with people on emails and phone calls, is that many people feel they can't get flood insurance. And that's a fallacy. It's not true. If you're a tenant, or you own a business, and you don't own the building, you know, it's that type of coverage you need to be concerned about, because not everything's a traumatic event that came from a fire, or a car accident, or whatever. Make sure and understand your policy's coverages. Verify that coverage prior to anything happening. The last thing you want to do is find out after the fact, and, excuse me, everyone, ensure that they have the appropriate insurance coverage for any relevant hazard that you face in your home. Federal assistance, well, you probably heard a lot about this in the last weekend. Federal assistance is not insurance. Most importantly, they really don't cover a lot. In order to get the coverage from FEMA first, our governor has to request that from the President of the United States. And in doing so, they have to provide evidence that we've had major damage in our state of Connecticut here. The town acts as your liaison. We try to get the information to provide to the state in order for them to gather their damage assessments, and we have to hit thresholds. And for instance, in 2021, the threshold for Fairfield County is $3.6 million in uninsured damage. And statewide, it's $5.5 million. So it's, it takes a lot to get there. Occasionally, we'll have a storm, and I think Elsa proved it, we did not receive a declaration for Elsa, unfortunate. And this insurance, this individual, excuse me, FEMA's individual assistance is not insurance. And a matter of fact, it only covers temporary housing, should your house become uninhabitable. It covers cleaning and sanitizing to prevent mold growth. It covers uninsured or underinsured housing. It is clearly intended to provide repairs to make a safe, sanitary, and functional living unit only. FEMA is limited to toilets, roofs, critical utilities, windows, doors, furnishings, appliances, and assistive equipment that supports daily living. And just on a quick note, the SBA also offers low-interest loans to cover flood-damaged properties. The SBA, for instance, was in Darien Library last year, and underutilized for Fairfield County. Very few people utilize it, because it's a loan, it's not a grant like FEMA's money, but FEMA would like to see everyone apply, and there's no fee or problem if you do not accept the loan. But I think it shows the intention of the homeowner or property owner, that you're trying to do whatever you can to recover from the damage.
Okay, next we have planning and zoning, land use, Jeremy Ginsberg, the director.
Good evening, everyone. Director of Land Use, Jeremy Ginsberg. We'll be following up a lot about with what Craig Flaherty said earlier. He mentioned that Darien's a coastal community, so we're subject to both coastal and riverine flooding, and riverine flooding is natural. So the goal, really, we look at it in our department, is a goal to minimize the impacts of that flooding. So I wanted to start with a broader look, not just Darien, but where does the water come from? When we talk about watersheds, we've used that word a lot tonight, watersheds are really the land areas that channel rainfall and snowmelt into local water bodies. So you can see on the slide here, all the way to the east is the Five Mile River watershed in that purple color, and to the west, the Norton River watershed in orange. Any water that falls in those areas will eventually end up, as I said, in the Norton River or the Five Mile River. And when you look at the extent of those watersheds, and how far up north they go, all the way northern New Canaan or Pound Ridge, so the water that flows in those parts of New Canaan eventually ends up in Darien. It all flows towards Long Island Sound. And that's important to understand, we're a low-lying community, we get impacts from Long Island coming at us from the south, but also the water from northward flowing downhill. So, that needs to be considered as we go ahead. And what's interesting, and as we move down to this next slide, we zoom in more to Darien. We talk about these little purple parcels of land, which are town-owned parcels. Some of them are schools, or this building, some are parks and beaches. But that's all the land the town controls and manages in each watershed, other than the public roads. So if you look at, say, the Five Mile River watershed, all the way to the east, it's partially in Noah. The town really owns less than an acre in that entire 700-acre watershed. It's all privately owned. Similarly, if you look at Stony Brook or Goodwives River, where we've had flooding in the past, and you look at the amount of land the town controls in those watersheds, whether they're buildings, parking lots, parks, it's very small. Look at the amount of purple area relative to the thousands of acres in each watershed. So it's important for us to do the best we can to manage, but what Ed will talk about after I speak here, is that public work can't really go on people's property and do things to private property. That's up to the private property owners. So what we have to do is focus on the water that flows onto private properties, and get that to be better managed. So again, here's an example, what we talked about earlier is the percentage of each watershed in Darien. So while Goodwives, Tokonik Brook, and Stony Brook watersheds are almost entirely in Darien, again, with a small amount of town property in each, Five Mile River and Norton River are much more extensive watersheds. So, the data's important to understand. So let's talk a little bit about what we do here locally in the Planning and Zoning Department, and our important work in reviewing development and grading work, especially on properties in areas that are in the flood zone, which are obviously the most susceptible to flooding. Our office maintains all the FEMA flood maps. We have the hard copies of what Craig referenced online, FEMA.gov, or the TownsMapGO, that you can see firsthand. We have the flood studies in our office for reference for those, for folks that want to get more information. But what Craig mentioned earlier is very important. Darien has a 200-year history, with most of its development occurring since 1940, since the end of World War II, the 40s and 50s and 60s. The railroad came through in 1820. The turnpike was a big factor, divides the town, and there's a lot of culverts that go under the railroad, it's elevated. And so, those are a lot of factors, not only the development, but the railroad. So we're really catching up now with better environmental regulations, and better drainage regulations, that are needed as the town gets more built up. But what we're finding is our focus really is, as properties get redeveloped, again, Darien is a community where people are redeveloping properties for the second or third time. You see houses and commercial buildings coming down. As we do this redevelopment, it's imperative that there be more onsite drainage facilities for each of these projects, and you'll hear more about that. Flood regulations developed in the mid-1980s, get stricter. FEMA requires us to adopt stricter and stricter regulations. Right now, all work in the flood zone requires living space to be at least one foot above the base flood. All mechanical units, air conditioners, generators, et cetera, need to be at least one foot above the base flood, and you cannot have a basement in the flood zone. So we work closely with the local land use boards, you watch them on TV 79 here, to ensure that these development projects comply with regulations. As part of their conditions of approval, we receive ASBIL surveys, certifications from professional engineers, we have in-house review of plans, we get elevation certificates to confirm that what's being built out in the field, development, drainage, systems, comply with the regulations. Again, our goal is, we're not going to eliminate flooding, we will help minimize and reduce flooding and drainage impacts to residents and to properties. So the next slide talks a little bit about what we do for developments, for people who can get building permits, add on to their houses, et cetera. Stormwater management regulations, as Craig mentioned, those have gotten more and more stringent in recent years. We're seen as some of the most stringent drainage, stormwater management regulations in the state. It's imperative that private property owners, as well as the town, incorporate private engineered stormwater systems and maintain them going forward. We require now drainage maintenance plans for people to not only install the systems, but to maintain it going forward. Again, we ask that certifications and ASBIL surveys come in, so we can ascertain that things are being done correctly. So, again, our goal is to minimize, and going forward, we're more conscious than ever about drainage, and each property owner having an onsite system, as Craig mentioned, property by property resiliency, everyone doing their part, if you will. The town, you remember those purple parcels within each watershed? Town can only do so much on their property. It will be up to each property owner, as their properties get redeveloped through time, to pitch in in an effort to try to address drainage issues and flooding issues. So I'll turn it over to Ed Gentile from Public Works to talk a little bit more about infrastructure and stormwater management. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Ed Gentile, Director of Public Works for the Town of Darien. Thank you for inviting me in to speak. I have some really good topics here, five gentlemen before me, tough act to follow. I'll do my very best for you. Let's talk about some lessons that have been learned, okay? Let's talk about what did we go through last year, and what did we, what did we learn from those things? How are we gonna get better? Things that we should be doing. Let's talk about flood hardening. It's something that will help in every situation. The town of Darien, specifically the DPW, is doing it throughout town. But let me tell you what the definition of flood hardening is. It's an action or procedure that is enacted to protect one's property from flooding. And it can be temporary, it can be permanent. Some of these items are elevating your equipment, or blocking up of openings that are at low levels around your home, and I don't see closing them off, I mean, blocking them up, coming up a little bit higher so the water can't get into those basement windows that you have, and so on. Installing door dams. We've purchased some for our pump stations that have buildings and doors. We're installing them now. They're temporary. You put them in place when the floods are coming, you pull them away, and you store them away when the storms have passed. We do use sandbags around some of our electrical equipment because of the nature of that equipment. Those are options also. We've enacted some policies and procedures at our DPW garage. After the two storms, one in July and one in September of last year, our lower-level bays, there's 14 of them, were flooded. The first storm, three feet, the second storm was eight and a half feet deep. We have now gone and made procedures set up that when we see a storm coming, and it's more of self-preservation now. We look at the storms, we want to make sure that we save our equipment for the town. We have stuff on trailers, we have stuff that we can go on and move, and so within 45 minutes to an hour, we can have those bays cleared out now, and all of our equipment up on higher ground. It's not an efficient approach to give up those bays below, but I thought it was a great opportunity to put in place some policies to protect the equipment. So that's what we do now. So I implore the residents of the town, if you're in a flood hazard zone, or you were flooded in the last storm, to make and implement a plan. You know where you're going to flood now, all right? That storm that we had in September, that was a good indicator for all of us, me in particular, especially with our pump stations, in particular, one of the biggest ones here at Stony Brook. You go there now, you will see there's a mark on the outside of the building that I put. We are now hardening this facility up to that elevation plus another foot. We're not taking any chances that equipment or that pump station going down. We're doing the same thing down near water. Marks on, you'll see the marks on our generator building and our building for the equipment. All have marks on it now, and we are hardening to that elevation. My second point I'd like to make is our FEMA flood maps are, prove to be quite accurate. They told you we're going to flood for 100-year or 500-year storm, and we did. So I stress to you folks, know where your property is. Make sure you take a look at it, and not just know where on a map it is. Those maps actually have some really good information. One of them is the elevation. Know how deep the water is around your house. Some of the houses you'll see, and I found on Herrcar Avenue, they flooded around it, but the first floor was high enough, the basement walls were high enough, so they didn't get in the house. It was an island. So know that information is very important. And another piece from these storms that we learned, not that we didn't know this before, but it became evident that debris became a problem for our culverts, our bridges in particular, stopping the water from getting downstream, backing the water up onto properties that maybe couldn't, could have been saved from some of the flooding, not all of it, but from some of it. Some of the debris that we found and pulled out of catch basins and culverts and head walls were, we had play equipment. There were garbage pails, lawn furniture, logs, limbs. There was a sofa. We all heard that story. And it was, it caused an impact. So we need to make sure that we get the message out. Relocate everything. Relocate everything that you can, away from the edge of the ponds, away from where the water's going to travel. People like to store their sheds, have their play equipment in their backyard, but have it near the stream or brook, or in a floodplain even. Those, this is a good opportunity to learn that you need to remove that stuff out of there. That's not a good place to store it, and these are the reasons why. And I just want to stress to you, and I think it's been mentioned before, as a Public Works representative and our Public Works staff, we cannot go on private property to do that for you. We'd like to, but unfortunately, we cannot. But so I'm here to get the message out, okay? Relocate that stuff if you can. So just, I put in some pictures here. This one here is a local area, unfortunately, on private property, but still, it's a good picture of what this private property owner had to deal with. That wasn't his, right? Came down the river in front of the bridge, and it blocked it up. This, again, is, I'm trying to stress, is we need to better manage our riverine areas. We need to better manage our overbank areas. This is what's coming down the stream. Some of the stuff should never have been here, unfortunately, did within magnitude of the storms that we had. This is the, this is an area that I have to maintain. These are the bridges. We have railings on all of them, they're for safety issues. But it also is a good catch for a lot of debris. A lot of the stuff we pulled out were logs, limbs, more play furniture, but the logs and the limbs, and they were all cut up. They were all cut up like they were ready to go in the stove, in the fireplace. And unfortunately, that's not where they ended up. What ends up happening, it blocks those grates at the top, the railings, and it forces the water now to have to go over, and forces the water to back up the stream. Those are the things that we need to work on as a better as a community. I'm going to just take you quickly through some stormwater, storm drainage terminology, so you better understand what I'm talking about. This here, I know it's pretty obvious, it's a bridge, okay? The water goes underneath it, the road above it. These bridges generally categorized by the DOT of 20 feet or greater, we have 11 of them. The DOT inspects those bridges approximately every four years. What we do have are less-size culverts, and you'll see the next picture, we have 23 of these. There are pipes, they convey water from one side of the road to the other, there's railings on top of them, they're a little inconspicuous, a lot of them you can't see because of the overgrown vegetation. I was able to get a good photo of this, but this is a culvert. Pictures in front of you now. Two of them are catch basins. We'll get to the third one in a second. We have smaller catch basins, they're older styles, they're called Hartford styles, they're smaller. Our standards are double that size now, and will allow for more water going. These structures are cleaned before and after every storm, they're cleaned on a regular basis. We have a list of locations that we know regularly flood. We go out there and we clean them before the storms are coming, just to make sure that they are functioning properly. Picture far right is what we call a trash rack. It goes through the, in front of the inlet pipe of a head wall. So this is the water's trying to get into a pipe and be conveyed downstream. We put these trash racks here to catch the debris that's coming down the river now. And we clean them before and after every storm. This is a brand-new one we put in Woodland Park right along West Avenue. Functioned great for us, but there was a lot of debris on it. We had to go back afterwards and remove that debris. I like to say I do get a lot of phone calls about the catch basins after the storms, and need to understand that we do clean them. And they send me a picture of debris over the top of the catch basins. Folks do need to understand that that debris has come down through the storm and has clogged it up. I appreciate the call, because now I know where to go and get, I do have to go clean those basins again. I go to the low-lying areas first, because they are more susceptible to flooding if we were to have another storm again. So some of our ongoing maintenance and mitigation efforts. We do catch basin upgrades. We do them during the paving season as part of our paving program. We do them often out of inspections that we go along the roadways, if we have sinkholes or something like that. These upgrades can be anywhere from a full-depth catch basin replacement, they generally are about six feet deep, so imagine a six-foot concrete structure with a catch basin top, the picture I just showed you before. That's a full replacement. We do new top replacements when they're older, dilapidated, deteriorating, they're falling apart. We also increase the catch basin size. I showed you a Hartford-style, small one in our standard. There are times that we increase those sizes because of the amount of flow coming down the gutter flow, the gutter line, and that flow needs to be conveyed into the catch basin, so we increase the size when necessary. We do storm drainage inspections. We have a CCTV camera in-house, and for the larger pipes, we do have a vendor or two that we bring in, depending on the size of the pipe. And at times, if we do find things through that CCTV work, generally clogs either roots or debris, we'll have them cleaned while we find them, and that company and us, we can actually do both of that. Small drainage systems, our in-house folks are able to do some smaller stuff. Our guys are talented. We do some pipe installation, catch basin changes, and things like that. Fourth bullet point I need to stress to the selectmen and to the residents, this is a DEP-mandated program. It is a, it's an opportunity for the state to convey their concerns about water quality. What it does, let me tell you what MS4 stands for first, that's always a good place to start. It's Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. It's a mandated program to regulate those facilities. What it does is, it's to reduce runoff, some of the programs, and provide better water quality. It requires you to do annual catch basin cleaning, it requires you to do street sweeping of every street in town at least once a year. We do it more for our street sweeping, our catch basins, we do clean every year, some more, if they're in low-lying areas, to keep them clean. There's also Low Impact Design, LED. We work closely with Planning and Zoning and Jeremy Ginsburg. That, and I'll repeat it again, but it needs to be said, Darien has the most stringent regulations that I've ever come across in the state of Connecticut for development with regards to fresh metal approach of stormwater management. There's also a Direct Connect Impervious Area Program that the DEP instituted, and it's requiring the towns to work on a 20% reduction in impervious areas directly connected to a river or brook. They want you to put it into galleries, they want you to run it through grass, they want you to purify or clean the water somehow, so that it's discharging into the streams and brooks in better condition than just running off an asphalt surface or a roof. And I understand that we have a lot of work that's ongoing at this time, and from these storms, it's evident that we have a lot more to do with regards to our systems, and we're working on that. An update on our flood studies, and I just want to reiterate that, you know, any and all improvements that we are going to propose through these studies, and any other studies that we go to look at, these improvements have to be, I'd say, measured and investigated for impacts to our residential properties downstream, okay? That's first and foremost. And you just, I guess, as a wide dish, can't you put in a bigger pipe? Well, putting in a bigger pipe takes the problem from your upstream of the pipe, and you moves it downstream to your neighbor's properties, okay? So that has to be investigated before any improvements can be made. So quickly, I'll get you some updates on these programs. Salt Box and Coach Limp area, not in a flood hazard zone. So we instituted a study here, as you see, 55-acre watershed, which is quite large. We are about 95% complete right now, and reported delivery date is at the end of October. We've had some meetings with the consultant lately. I've asked him to go back and make some changes to look at some different approaches, different-sized storms, different-sized culverts, so that we're getting the best bang for our buck in actually planning a little bit further for the future. As you've heard from Craig, the future looks like we're going to get more water with these storms. So looking at it a little bit with the future in mind as I design these things, you know, 25-year, 50-year storm, 100-year storm, looking at all of those implications and the costs that go with them too. And our current findings for this, for this area, shows that the existing culverts that are in Salt Box and Coach Limp, and I'll actually go to Thomasina, are all undersized for the side storms that we need. So right now, we're finalizing the report, we're getting probable cost estimate to go with it, and from that approach, we'll bring it in front of the administration. I do have some funds set aside for this as part of the ARPA program to institute construction. We'll find out if that money is enough or not when we get the probable cost estimate. Sorry. Bailey Avenue area, again, not a section or area in the flood hazard zone. It is, Bailey Avenue, West Avenue make a connection by the Cummings Stream, it's over by Leroy Avenue. That flooded significantly the last storm. Again, we're about 95% complete on the report. We do expect that report by the end of this month. Unfortunately, this, the findings here were, I think, what we all kind of thought could happen here, which is the culvert under the railroad tracks is inadequately sized for the amount of water that came through there. And, you know, unfortunately, that's a culvert that I don't have control over, and I rarely see the metro north advancing to culvert increases, sizes, in my history. But it's not something that we won't bring to their attention, of course, and see how they feel about making any improvements. But again, remember, any culvert increase sizes, I have to look at the downstream impacts. And I will say, unfortunately, the DPW garage is downstream, and part of the impact of that last storm is I had eight and a half feet of water in the back. So that's something we have to weigh as we go forward with that area. But again, let me point out, it's letting the residents know in that area that got flooded, one, what the possible elevation of the storm coming could be, and number two, what are some options for themselves? You know, do they have it mapped as a flood hazard zone? Do they not? These are all things that we'll be talking about in the next coming months. Third study that we're working on is Grove Street, Tilly Pond area. It's a public-private partnership done with some of the business owners downtown and the town. We're studying that whole conveyance system from Tilly Pond, under the railroad tracks, through Grove Street, Brook Street, down Corbin Drive, and all the way to under I-95 where it connects to Goodwives River. We're about 50% complete right now. We are working on some field inspections, we have some culvert inspections to do before it gets too cold. I understand it's scheduled for next week, and we're working on that delivery date probably the end of December, if not maybe into January. It really depends on the weather conditions, if we can get out there soon enough to finish these inspections. So we have some ongoing DPW infrastructure projects also, and the damage to these structures were, occurred during the recent storm events too. So we do have some roadway projects. One of the major areas that we have been focusing on right now is the West Avenue Fairfield area. That's a drainage system in there that kind of didn't, I have to say, didn't act as it should. So we're making some improvements there. We have Long Neck Point, we have some project there, a low-lying area that got flooded, impacted property owners there. We're implementing some pipe insulation in the catch basin to convey that water underground and out to the Long Island Sound. Bridges. If you look up there, we have Rings End Road Bridge, has some bridge abutment works that needs to be done. The Olkings Highway South Bridge, there's a decking work that needs to be done, and there's some scour work that needs to be completed too. Those two projects have funds already associated with them and tailored for them, based on estimates of $163,000 and $90,000 respectively. And finally, Hanson Road Bridge, which we came across in July, just doing our routine inspection out there. One of our guys had noticed it, brought it to our attention, and quickly moved on it. We had a pre-construction meeting yesterday, so we've already scheduled the topographic survey, wetland survey, soil borings, and so on, so that we can put together a plan to get this bridge repaired as quickly as we can. Still targeting some possible funding next year with a state local bridge program. If they do go and fund that, we'll be ready to submit an application. Finally, my favorite, Gormes Pond Dam. If I hear from my assistant Darren that this is the icon of town of Darien anymore, I have to look at the crest above you folks to remind me, I think I get the picture now. It is a beautiful facility, it's a beautiful bridge, and a fantastic dam, and unfortunately, it was damaged. So we have a consultant already working on the design. We're submitting to deep in the next couple of weeks, from what I understand. We've also met with FEMA. We're trying to get money from them to help us with the repair. So I've been busy trying to, between FEMA and the designer, trying to make sure we coordinate the effort properly and not spend money that we cannot get reimbursed for. So be very careful in that approach. This is the last picture of it. We were able to get out there after the storm and take some photos from the front edge, and you could see- And you could see where the damage was significant enough to expose the soft core of the dam underneath. So we're working on that now too. Thank you.
So thank you to all of our department heads and Craig for your diligent review of emergency preparedness and response. Each presenter gave us a lot of valuable information. And some of this is pretty, pretty involved. So please remember that this presentation is up on the website and you can take a look at it at your convenience. And there will be not only this presentation, but there's additional information on the emergency management page of the town website that I urge you strongly to take a look at. And I want to say to our residents that have experienced flooding, I want you to know that the town continuously monitors our waterways and is doing everything they can to seek methods to mitigate flooding for the town. We have taken action, you can see on here what the town has done. You've heard about the stringent water, storm water and flood plain management standards that we've implemented on both new and redevelopment projects. We are providing assistance with disaster grant and reimbursement requests. And we are continuously investigating appropriate drainage improvements. The next slide has, it's a great reference for our town department contacts, should you wish to reach out to them with any questions. There are their emails. And I'd like to stress that as was noted in this presentation, there are important actions that property owners can take to protect their property and also to protect their neighbors downstream. When you're, when you're on a waterway, it's really important that the water be able to move smoothly. And one simple thing to do is to take a look at what has been mentioned, and that's this debris that could become waterborne. So take a look at what you have outside of your properties and make sure that before storms, it's secured or it's moved away. This will help the whole community. And just like any initiative in our town, all of us acting together can make a difference. So I really appreciate you, oh, there it is. I really appreciate all of you visiting with us tonight. I hope that people that are watching will take a look at the presentation and you'll reach out if you have any questions. So now we will, I will open it up to the board of selectmen if they have any thoughts or comments. And then if anybody in the audience has any questions, we'll try to take them.
Monica, do we want to ask the questions in order of the presentations or kind of do the ones, Mr. Flaherty first and then move down? Or what's the best way you want to?
I guess let's do by person. So each individual, let's start with Craig. And if any, we'll just go through the board if you have questions.
You know, Craig, I noted that you said our systems are undersized. And I took it from the balance of the presentation, were you speaking about like the culvert situation in general? But what, when you say systems and undersized, could you be specific as to what you were referring to?
Sure. So you can look at some of the larger concentrated culverts Ed showed some pictures of. Pretty much every time the, any water course crosses the railroad, we know we've got a pinch point there. But even on a very basic level, the catch basins and culverts that serve our streets were installed or designed based on now obsolete data and obsolete sizing criteria. So it's not unusual that even on a street not in a flood zone, the water can't get in the catch basin because there's not enough catch basins or the water has already filled up the pipe underground, which you can't see in that situation, it's not a river. And it's starting to bubble out of catch basins or bubble out of manholes. So again, a storm like Ida is impossible to design for, really, the room it would take up. You make sure in those situations that water can travel safely over land effectively. But, you know, as Ed now knows and he's looking at neighborhood by neighborhood, there are these localized drainage areas that the system can be improved and enlarged, provided it's not potentially sending more water to someone downstream.
So it would have to be a comprehensive look. As I pointed out, you can't just fix one area because then it'll just spill down farther.
You start from the bottom, you go up, right? You can't, you can't build capacity at the top because that's going to hurt someone. I use, railroad tracks is probably our biggest kind of unsolvable problem. You know, the railroad bed is a dam and has all these small holes in it. If we just doubled the size of all those holes, the water behind the dam would be lower, but the water downstream would be moving faster and deeper. So you take that concept and you can apply it in a lot of small areas and neighborhoods as well. So you start from the bottom, you work your way up.
Thanks.
Wait, we'll go through the board of selectmen first, if that's okay.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I should have said, thank you for your service and all of your work.
You're welcome.
The first thing, for goodness sakes, thank you.
Yeah, I have a co-question, probably Craig, you can probably answer along with Jeremy. When you suggest for neighbors to, you know, obviously keep debris off their properties, keep debris off the lawn, how about things like actually cleaning the waterways, actually going in there and taking out, you know, stumps and trees and branches and sediment that may be setting, dredging their own, you know, riverways that may be going to the property's setup?
Yeah, so some of this, the caution to folks that have a water course in their backyard or have a wetland in their backyard is that is a regulated area. So the Environmental Protection Commission and the staff member under Jeremy, Rick Tellamelli, can answer a specific question on can I go do this, right? Generally, so now I'm going to speak generally. If it's clearly something that fell in there and doesn't belong there, you have the right to remove it. And I would suggest you have the obligation to remove it. When you get into removing earth or removing things, you know, that are stable, like a...
Rocks?
Yeah, you know, that could cross the line into altering a natural condition, which you cannot do, right? So there's some obvious things you can do. If it's clearly an object that fell in there, that washed down there, get it out. There's some obvious things you really can't do without a permit, which is, you know, moving earth and moving rock and that sort of thing. And there's a gray area in between. That gray area in between is the one, the questions you should be asking of the staff member to get a sense of what you can do and what you can't do.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have a question for Craig from the audience?
I'll repeat the questions maybe to make it easy to...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What is the probable reason for the increase in rainfall? People are blaming on climate change. Is that one aspect of it or is there another? How do we, how do we know that we're increasing so much and where is it coming from?
So the question is, what is the likely reason that rainfall is increasing? What's the source and cause of that? Based on everything that I have read and studied, the cause is the warming climate. So where water is available to be absorbed into the atmosphere, the atmosphere can hold more water. And when the dew point is crossed and creates a rainfall event, more water can fall out of the sky more quickly.
Thank you.
Your study of the Hecker Avenue Stony Brook said that you started at the Post Road and then Hecker and then Renshaw. And the study shows that there could be no improvement in the amount of water. Why is not the study going all the way back to Weber and where their runoff comes down to us?
So the slide that I had in my presentation that focused on a very specific section of Stony Brook, the question was why didn't we study all of the Stony Brook? The answer is, we did study all of the Stony Brook. It's a 2,000-page report. It is available online. It's actually a pretty good read. And it goes through, I think the detailed study was from Gorms Pond to Hanson Road. So we did look at the entire thing, recommendations for the entire thing. We looked at all the obstructions and the geometry along the entire thing and the, and the depth of flooding. Tonight, you know, that was a study from 12 or something years ago. I was just kind of highlighting a piece of it to kind of describe one of the conclusions we made.
Are you saying that nothing can be done upstream to help anybody?
So there's a lot of stuff in that study. And it's hard to recall all of it, but it's hard to, it's hard to go... Let me repeat the question first of all. Are you saying there's nothing that can be done upstream in the Stony Brook based on that study?
Craig, wouldn't it be fair to say that there are things we can do?
Correct.
They're extreme.
Correct.
They're expensive. And the result of the reduction in water was minor. So the amount of flooding that you were able to resolve was very low.
Correct.
High price.
That's, that is a good summary. I think the other important point is that a lot of the improvements were on private property.
Yes.
So the first step would be to negotiate easements or property purchases or construction rights on a lot of different properties. But even if we did, you know, dozens of improvements, the benefits, in our estimation, did not outweigh the cost.
Any other questions for Craig from the audience? Okay, so our next speaker was Chief Anderson. Does anyone have any questions for him?
Chief, wonderful presentation. Obviously, we're very prepared. I, I read where you spoke about all of the conversations and communications you have with other state, local agencies in preparation. When those events are ongoing and occurring, I trust that you're still speaking to all those counterparts in other communities and our, and our emergency services here, whether they're the fire department or Post 52, that those are dynamic events and those communications go on in the middle and during the storm events.
Absolutely. You know, these storms are, in my estimation, it's, you know, pre-event, in-event and post-event. And again, here's where we, I think, excel because we have a working relationship with all our agencies here in Darien, that it is not unusual on any day to get a text from anybody that's involved with emergency management here. And any time of the day or night, we are going to have ongoing communication all the time with our fire department and EMS and through mutual aid compacts. We may have somebody from Rowell coming here or we may be there in an emergency flooding situation. If they're getting something here or not, there's compacts in place for us to quickly dial up and dial back across the region here. So it's an ongoing dialogue during these events. My, you know, the texts go off pretty much around the clock. But I think we're well-prepared and we're all on the same page of what is coming and what is not coming. So we do have a, you know, a concerted, but, you know, a parallel approach on all our emergency services to make sure we're providing the best possible service.
Board, any other questions? Okay. Any questions, please?
This is completely irrelevant, but I've always wanted to know. Police are always delivering babies. Do you have training on how to deliver a baby?
All police officers in the state of Connecticut are trained to at least the emergency response technician level. It's called EMR now. So surprisingly, yes, all police officers have training and surprisingly, most police officers have at least been there when it was ongoing.
That's amazing.
I can tell you my story because it's a chapter in my book, but if you want, I won't tell it tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the chief? No? Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker was our director of health, David Knopf. Does anyone have any questions from the board for David? No? Any questions for our health director from the audience? Seeing none. Okay. And after David, we had our director of emergency management, Mark McEwen. Do we have any questions from the board for Mark?
Yeah, Mark. Could you be a little bit more clear about how FEMA will cover a loss for a house? And so I've had questions from some constituents about some of the houses that were actually acquired through a FEMA grant, or to your point, there was 75% FEMA funding, 25% for the town. What were the circumstances that led to that? Because not all houses can qualify for that. That's a pretty high bar. Could you...
Sure, I'll do my best. There's individual assistance, which helps a homeowner try to recover. And then there's mitigation money that's put aside from a disaster. And it's put aside for mitigation efforts in the future. So right now, there's two named storms that were declared. Ida's one of them and coronavirus, believe it or not, is another one. And there's money set aside from the federal government that goes to the states and the towns can apply for grants in order to mitigate future disasters. So we applied for mitigation for a homeowner to elevate their home and also to acquire their property. And that process, to my best estimate, is six years in the making. It was multiple applications. Some of these are done on other program levels, which are a competitive process nationwide. They're harder to get money for. They tend to go to areas of the country that are hit hard and frequently with large storms. And for instance, the one in particular that happened this past year on Cremmons Road, that house itself has been damaged at least a dozen times and four feet or more in the living quarters. When I say living quarters, I'm not talking about the basement. I'm talking about bedrooms, kitchens, living rooms and things of that magnitude. Because the federal government looks at it from a cost benefit, you have to basically spend the amount of money that they'll save, if that makes any sense. You have to have a cost benefit analysis of equal to one, which means for every federal dollar spent, they're going to get their return on their money. So in this particular case, the property value, and I'm going to round it up, say it was $650,000. They've had over that in losses since, I believe, 1978 is when we had some data from. And the current homeowner that owned the property during the storms actually didn't own the home through that whole period. That's the federal government realizing they've had losses, they keep track of it and they call the properties repetitive loss properties. And then they have another category called severe repetitive loss properties. And in order to meet the first threshold, you have to have like three storms that damages the home over a period of like four years. And to hit severe repetitive loss properties, and that's where you, when you start having severe, it's multiple times over multiple years. And again, I want to say about 12 losses over 30 years or whatever it was. The kind of money you're talking was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars more than the property was worth. So that made that a candidate, if you will. In the whole of town of Darien, I was just reading the report that the consultant's been working on. And I want to say there's, the number right, I could be wrong, but 77 properties that are repetitive loss? And then severe repetitive loss, there was only like a dozen. And out of those, we only had four people that were interested in applying for mitigation grants or were interested enough to cooperate and put their applications forward for the next round of mitigation money. So I would say that if you're in a predicament where you've lost a lot and continue to worry every night over the storms that are in the future, call my phone number here or my email and we can discuss the best way to go from there. And it's just a very long, windy road. Their house was damaged substantially in Elsa. And FEMA has what they call a substantial damage, which you cannot rebuild the property once it's damaged to that percentage. And I believe it's 50%, right?
Correct.
So 50% of the house value, not the land value, just the house value, makes it so you can't build it back without meeting FEMA's guidelines for elevation and all those things. So we have one property right now that's hoping to get acquired. And we have two elevations that are seeking... that are seeking to apply under this round. An answer?
Even the elevations are not easy.
No.
Because they have to come in within a cost threshold.
Yeah, they all have to hit the benefit to the government. And the reality is, if the elevation could be achieved for 205...
205.
It doesn't need to meet the benefit-cost analysis. But that, in Fairfield County, is a very difficult problem to, you know, to achieve that. The last time we had an elevation application, to disconnect all the utilities, raise the house, lift it, that's the easy part. And then, reassemble the house, it was almost $300,000. So, it's very difficult to hit the benefit-cost analysis for an elevation.
And with the elevations, the homeowner is responsible?
For the percentage share.
Yeah.
Yes.
If a homeowner puts a claim in for insurance for a flood, does that get reported back to the town if the homeowner doesn't do that? The insurance company won't?
We don't know.
You won't know?
We don't. So, it's very difficult for me to even explain FEMA's policies because once, once they declare the disaster, it's an agreement between the homeowner and FEMA. We don't have any interaction. We just try to get the storm declared. Once that's done, then people can apply for assistance. What they receive, and I've heard from many people in our community, that it's not even worth the aggravation they have to go through. But the reality is, they don't pay for a lot. It's not insurance. It's not like you have a car accident and they fix your car so it looks brand new. It's nothing like that. But for a lot of people, it's helpful. So, I want to make sure people understand that. You know, if you've lost your house and you have no heat and hot water, and, you know, they can help you get back on your feet again. That's an important thing.
And Mark, it's important that people tell you, though.
Correct. We have to...
That's my point, too.
So, it kind of works. We call the state. We say, "We got flooded. It's really bad." And during IDA, Darien was the hardest-hit community in the state of Connecticut. Don't know if anybody knew that, but that's the reality of it. The state of Connecticut governor's office didn't even want to try to declare either one of those floods because they didn't see the damage that we were reporting. So, we call up, and I go to a lot of people's homes, and I drive through the neighborhoods, and we know all the people we visit. It's hard not to be a little bit attached to our desire to help people. So, especially in public safety. So, we try to push as hard as we can to have them do what they call preliminary damage assessment statewide. And if you can imagine, sometimes storms happen, and it only happens in a generalized, localized area. And other times, it's across the whole state. So, those thresholds I gave you, 3.6 million for Fairfield County, it doesn't sound like a lot of money. But the reality is, it's uninsured damages.
Yep.
So, if you can imagine, there are people that have flood insurance, especially the ones that have to, are mandated to have flood insurance. A lot of the people that lose a lot are the ones that are in the floodplain, not in some of the areas that Ed mentioned tonight. But there is a definite desire for all of us to try to get the governor to understand the scope and magnitude of that disaster. And we did that. We kept pushing and pushing to the point where my agency at the state level called us directly and said, "The governor would like to come down." So, he did. He came down. He toured some of the hardest-hit business areas. He wasn't as energetic looking at the residential areas. But it made enough of an impact that they called for a damage assessment across the state. And that's what earned us the presidential declaration. But we really don't put dollars and cents into our damage assessments. It's really about the number of homes and the living area that got affected. And they put a calculation to it somehow. I have nothing to do with it. And they come up with their numbers. So, one of the things they need to know is, if you do have flood insurance and homeowner's insurance, because that plays into whether it's uninsured damages. They don't ask for values. They don't ask, you know, a lot of times, flood insurance is like $50,000 worth of personal belongings is the max. So, all that goes into it. It's hard to get one. It's, I've been around for a long time. I've been 40 years in the fire service and since 2005 in emergency management. And we've hit it more than I care to. It's a challenge to the town. We've seen it too many times, unfortunately. But I think we see it across the country. But it's a benefit to people that have nothing. I mean, there's people that are retired that struggle to get their boiler put back and working. It's what we do the best job we can to get the numbers. And we call Code Red because it hits the most amount of homes. We send out emails. We send out media blasts. We try to get the newspapers involved. And this all happens in a window of 14 days. Once that happens, we can't even report it anymore. So...
I guess my point is, I'm sure there are many residents in town that had substantial damage, not FEMA damage, and certainly not flood insurance, you know, $20,000 and under, that we just said, "We've got to get back to business. Let's clean out our basement. Let's toss everything." And this never gets reported. In the end, that has a profound impact on the fact that we should not qualify for FEMA grant because we didn't have that threshold of $3.5 million or more.
Correct.
So, I'm asking you, would it be in the best suggestion to say, if we experience this again, and we each have this small amount of, you know, damage that we take on the chin and say, "I'm sorry, we, you know, didn't have flood insurance. It's not going to be covered," how do we report that $20,000 and under worth of damage to the town so you can go out and advocate to make sure that we get that declaration? Because we did deserve it last round.
We have, we do have people that report it, no matter what the loss is. Small, $500, $1,000, whatever, some, you know, a couple inches of water on their basement floor. But for all those little ones that report, we have substantial ones that never said a word.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And we had FEMA, when they finally, once they heard how bad it was, and they all showed up and with a calvary, as I like to say, and we started walking neighborhood to neighborhood, we would go to one house that reported their damage, and we would find five to six more that had the same problem. And the folks from FEMA aren't from Darien. They're not from Connecticut. They're all over the country. And a lot of them have, you know, southern accents. And they've been through storms before, and they're very knowledgeable. But, you know, they'll look at the earth, and they'll look at your homes, and they'll sit there and go, "Well, if that one got flooded, those did as well."
So, what should the residents do?
They'll knock on doors. And we find that damage is really what gets us where we need to go, is the ones that don't call it in. But yet, we find when we're walking around. So, it's initially done by us, then it's secondarily done by FEMA and us. If we, if the governor thinks we're going to make it, then we get FEMA involved, and they actually come out here and we work together.
FEMA didn't show up for a month after this storm happened. So, by that time, most of our residents had cleaned up their mess and were back in business.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
And they are not insurance. You don't call somebody at FEMA, and they show up the next morning at your door with an appointment and go through your home and, you know, mark down an inventory of everything that was damaged. That's not the way it works.
At this point, we were trying to...
It's been, it's been over a year before things have been declared before. So, it is not fast by any means.
Mark, so is our message to the residents, if they experience damage, uninsured damage after a storm event, contact your office?
Yes. But I will say this. I will say, we get a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails, and people will report damage, but they will not report to us. And the reason being is, privacy is everyone's best interest. No one wants to be out there. They don't want to put their information out there. So, I've had people tell me right over the phone, "I have damage, but I'm not going to give it to you." It's just the way it is. So, they're a minority. Most people are very willing and very quick to get whatever I ask or whatever we ask to hand over to us so that we can promote it as best we can and provide the evidence that's necessary.
So, that's good on FEMA, Mark. Do you want to reiterate about insurance, especially for tenants and small businesses?
Yeah. You know, I, not that I want to tell everybody where I live, but I live at the top of a hill. And it's one of the highest spots in town of Darien. I've had floods in my house. It's not always the bottom of a hill. It's not always near the coast. The reality is, I could get flood insurance. And I've chosen not to because I really don't have any, store anything in my basement. And I've put my oil burner this high on the wall since the first flood. So, the reality is, there are things you can do before a storm, or repairs after a storm, like Ed said, hardening. But...
But tenants can...
Tenants, tenants...
Renters can get insurance.
Absolutely. I, you know, I'm in the fire business. And we see fires, unfortunately, way too much in this town. It's a small community. Thank God, it's as little as the problem is, but it's here. And I've heard too many tenants not have insurance, any kind of insurance. And they don't understand that a homeowner might have insurance, but it's going to fix up the dwelling for the homeowner, and the tenant has nothing.
Right.
So, I implore anyone who went through Elsa and flooded, and certainly went through IDA and flooded, to the degree they did, they should have it today. If they don't have it today, I implore you to have it. You wouldn't drive your car without insurance. I mean, it's illegal to do so, but it's the same concept. If you know you have that hazard, you best have flood insurance. And that goes equally for a tenant. And definitely, if you're a business owner, it amazes me, living in this town since 1964, that people don't even know where it does flood. And that's, as Craig pointed out, a five-second Google search on FEMA flood maps. And we have business owners that don't even know they're in a floodplain. Forget a flood zone. We're talking in the floodplain where it's going to flood. So, business owners, tenants, homeowners, you know, everyone should look at their hazards they face and make sure their insurance is covering it.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Does anyone else have any questions for Mark?
I do. Just, I don't know if you can disclose this, but you mentioned there's one home pending receipt of funds from FEMA to be bought out. Can you disclose the location of that?
I can't.
And it's not even to that stage? We have...
Yeah, it's premature.
Okay, why?
The application literally just got sent in.
When it's done, will that be public information?
To the extent that the town has to...
We're allowed to disclose the street location. We're not allowed to disclose either the family's name or the number.
Yeah, I just was curious about the street, you know, the neighborhood.
Did that get turned in? I don't even...
They, no applications have been filed yet. So, if the application gets approved by FEMA, at a certain point, because the grant will run through the town, we'll have to appropriate funds to do that. And at that point...
It'll become public.
It'll become public. Yeah, okay. But I've heard about...
But it's not in a flood zone. That's what's frustrating for the people that are in their 80s that are trying to work with us to get them some mitigation money.
So, any other questions for Mark? Claire?
I don't know if it's for you, you can ask me this, Mark. But is, does the town, does anyone require any kind of disclosure statement that be given to a potential house buyer that tells them that the house is in a flood zone, has been substantially damaged? The things that you were just talking about, potential homeowner, do they, are they on their own to research this stuff? Or do the, is there a disclosure that should be made?
I'm not a lawyer, but I'll give you the best I can from the town attorney and the federal government, which advises me through my capacity. We're not allowed to disclose a home that floods, even if we know it floods. And I say that because, imagine if you were one of those homeowners, which I'd imagine if you're here tonight, you're probably affected by it. You'd never be able to sell your home. So, the federal government doesn't allow us to disclose actual addresses. And what I tell people when they call and inquire is, go to the flood maps that we discussed tonight and see if you're in a flood zone or in the floodplain. And if you need help reading a map, zoning will help you read the map. I'll help you read the map as best I can. They're pretty straightforward online. That's really the only way. And then, your attorney that's representing the buyer and the seller need to do their job as well as the realtors. They are required to, you know, disclaim it and say what the story is. But we can't legally provide that information.
But Claire, I would say that, and I don't work for Realtor.com, but Realtor.com, if you Google your house, there's Zillow, there's Realtor.com. If you hit your, whatever listing it is, you will see on a tab, environmental risk. It will give you your FEMA score, and it'll give you your fire score. And you can drill down, and you can find all of the information regarding flooding that you could possibly want on whatever house it is that you're looking at.
Okay. I just ask, because in the RTM, there was some discussion, you know, the house that was, that the RTM voted for money, you know, to purchase this, there was some discussion that, shouldn't the person have known better? And why should we cover that cost? And I guess it would be good to have this discussion if it happens again, that another house is brought up.
What I will say is this. The homeowners that we speak with, business owners, innocently enough, don't know. And I don't know why that is or how it happened. Some of them were aware they're in a flood zone, but what we hear most often is, they didn't understand how much it risked. There's, you know, it's, I don't even know the best way to put it. It's, that's what I hear out in the street when we're knocking on doors and people are in their booths, looking out their basements. They all say, "Yeah, I have flood insurance because I'm mandated because I have a mortgage." You know, there's people who buy houses now that buy them cash. I don't, God bless. The reality is, they buy them cash, and they're not required to have flood insurance. And that's a large investment for anyone. And you're really putting it all out there, if you will, without any kind of coverage. So, in the grand scheme of things, we had about 200 homes that were flooded that we knew of. So, for that 200, there's probably quite a few more, maybe another 50 to 100 that we never heard about, or for some reason, I, we pretty much know the areas. I mean, anyone who's been in the town as long as Chief Anderson, myself, and some other people, you know the streets, you know the rivers, the watercourses, et cetera. But we can't, we can't disclose it. I wish we would. It would certainly help other people, but it's problematic. But we are allowed to say neighborhoods. We're allowed to say what neighborhoods, but watercourses, but that's the extent of it that I know of.
But I would hope that people would take it upon themselves before they purchase a home to do that basic research, because that information is available out there.
It's kind of scary to look up your home and then find out you're in the wrong zone. But you got to know. It's important to know. It's, you know, you have your family. Some of them may be older and don't walk as well or get around as much. And then, you might have little kids that can't walk at all. I mean, it's imperative, in my opinion, to know for public safety. So, fortunately, it only goes so far. So, please look it up. And I implore people that are watching or may see this at a later time to look at their information on their home or their perspective by buying whatever they're looking at in the future.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark? No? Okay. Thanks, Mark. Our next speaker was Jeremy Ginsburg, Director of Land Use. Does anyone from the board have any questions? Sarah?
Sorry, is your name Sarah? Jeremy. How are you today? To Mark's point, who was just speaking, we have a town that's 98% developed, something like that, 97, 98% developed. We have residents who live in floodplains. We have residents who live in flood zones. And many of whom, to Mark's point, do not know that. Do you know the number? I think, I felt like we had numbers last fall when we were first discussing this, but I don't remember offhand. The number of people who live in a floodplain in our town, do you know?
I used to know it with a number off the top of my head. Let me take a number, and then I'm going to ask the experts in the back. I say between 700 and, Darien has 7,000 households.
Right.
We're not going to talk about commercial property. 7,000 households. I would say between 700 and 800 households in Darien. But let's ask the group back there. Craig's saying about right. Ed, about right. So, about 10% of the households in Darien are in the flood zone.
And the floodplain being worse than the flood zone.
Floodplain being worse. Again, when you think of certain neighborhoods, Roat Bay, very low line, right on the coast. There's many properties down in Tokneek, again, low line, right on the water, that are in the flood zone. There's other properties, Tokneek Club, again, right on the water, you're in the flood zone. So, it's...
So, if an individual, look, I looked... So, if an individual, look, I, I looked at some of the links, Craig, that some of them are a little tricky to read, right?
Yeah.
If someone didn't know and had a hard time figuring out, can they call your office?
No, better. Come on in. I, I have people in the office that will take out the maps, all the resources we have to assist people. We'll track down a survey, if there's one on file. We'll take that two thousand page Stony Brook report, which has these various cross-sections. And we'll sit there and take that little piece that Craig showed with magnifying glasses. We do that and it's really interesting for us to analyze it. And really, there are people whose, a small corner of your house.
Right.
There's something called a letter of map revision or a letter of map amendment. I don't want to get too technical. Where people can technically get their way out of the flood zone. If a small portion of the house is in the flood zone, you just fill around that. And you can get your way out of the flood zone, if you will. Very rare, it happens about once a year, uh, where people have that ability. But absolutely, our office, regular office hours, or you can make an appointment. And we'd be glad to help people based on surveys or other information we can piece together. Let you know what's possible and what's not possible.
Thank you. Sure, sure.
Thank you for your report. You were mentioning that we're very regulated. We, we have some of the most stringent regulations in the state. Are there any on your wish list, if you could draw up a rule or reg that you would like that you don't currently have?
Well, it's, it's funny you mention that. I've spoken with Ed last week about taking, relooking, if you will, at our stormwater management regulations, which dictate as people redevelop their property, whether it's adding a two-car garage or adding an addition out the back or adding a swimming pool. At what threshold, what amount of square footage will we require people to get a full drainage analysis? Hire an engineer, get a drainage study, have Public Works Department look at the drainage study. Pay for you to install an underground system or a rain garden, et cetera, and maintain it going forward. Uh, right now generally it's a thousand square feet. But we've talked a little bit about bringing a consultant on board to sit down with us, talk a little bit about what can we do even further? We have to find the right balance, you know? If someone's putting a little portico over their front porch, you know, we're not going to make them do a ten thousand dollar drainage study. So, we have to find that not everyone is doing a total rebuild on their house. Some people are doing just minor additions and alterations. We have to find that sweet spot of everyone, as I said, property-to-property resiliency, but not being overbearing. And so, we're, we're probably going to bring someone in to work with us on what is an appropriate standard? What can we do even better, exactly what you mentioned?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. But I will say, we are not, no one in our department has been trained to deliver a baby.
There's time. There's time. Any other questions for Jeremy from the board, from the audience? Yes?
Yes. Um, I am on the Good Wives River portion. And my question there with the disaster that took place down in the Good Wives River Shopping Center, et cetera, um, where we are, which is more downriver, so much silt and rock has built up on the river. Which we will, we could bring the Environmental Protection Agency in. But before we do that, does the town take any responsibility looking at the river upstream to, to make recommendations that maybe that property needs to do something because it is, the silt is coming downriver? Can the town take responsibility managing the waterway to the private homes?
Certainly, we, we talk about that tonight, and I know I'll chime in here, where we talk about the pre-storm. Things like, and I was, what's interesting, when you watch the, the video from Florida where you see cars floating away. None of us can lift a car, but the water lifts these cars and lifts things that, like this podium, that we, they just get carried away. So, when I talked about things that get clogged into a culvert or block a waterway, those are things I'm sure people look in their yard and say, that? I can't believe that the storm will take that, whether it's a picnic table or law, uh, pile of logs and carries them away. So, I think a lot of it is for private property owners who may be upstream to, even if they don't think it'll move, because that has the possibility of blocking, modifying a waterway. As we discussed, water will find its own way downstream. And oftentimes, as you mentioned, it brings silt and debris with it downstream. I know, relative to Marcy's comment, last September, I spent a lot of time going to various properties to look at things that were brought downstream. What can I do without a permit? What do I need a permit for? Usually it's something like dredging, where you're going to bring a machine in. We would require a permit for that. Where it's something where you say, oh, this log, I'll pick it up by hand or get a picnic table out of there, whatever it is. You wouldn't need a permit for something like that.
What if somebody to just dig it up without a bulldozer? Do you still need the EPA?
I, I think what we would do, uh, is what we did last September is on a case-by-case basis where a staff member will go out. And I visited dozens of properties last September, one-on-one. Let's see the damage, what, what it is, and make it determined based on that. How much work it's going to take, whether it's two people with a wheelbarrow or a company with a dump truck. What came downstream? What kind of material? Uh, are you working in the river, near the river? So, it was a lot of, number of factors. It's a great question. Really, we would look at it as case-by-case basis.
So, we'd go to your office and...
Yeah, call us. We'd be happy to go down and try to analyze it with you and come up with an appropriate solution. Again, with the understanding that you're the recipient, you're the downstream recipient.
I know. This is the other thing. Remember Richard Gindell's and the Friends of the Good Wives? And at least he kind of kept his eye on the river and would make suggestions to homeowners. That's not happening anymore. So, there's nobody that's regulating this, this large river.
Well, without, without digressing too much, Ed and I have had, and Craig as well, numerous conversations about dredging, the pros and cons of dredging. And how much, I'll call it supply area can be created through a dredging project. It's part of a, what I understand, a natural lifespan of a river or stream or water body. But how much extra supply does it create? And I'm not an engineer, just came with the babies, but one of the engineers can answer that question. In terms of, if we were to dredge every river or the stream in town tomorrow, how much benefit would we get from that? Well, it's, again, it's good for me maintaining from a flood capacity. I'll do, I'll let the engineers answer that question. It's a good question.
It is.
I'll leave it at that.
Well?
Yeah, um, Jerry, I'm not sure if this is a question for you or maybe one of the other experts. But what role does the flood control board play? They're part of the EPC.
Right.
They take on through the flood control board, responsibility for stormwater and erosion control. So, how do they play in the midst of all this?
Right. The, in fact, you're, you're correct. According to the town charter, the Town's Environmental Protection Commission, which is the inland wetlands agency, that is also the flood erosion control board in Darien. And I know back in twenty fifteen to, or even earlier, one of the, when Craig and our team looked at various possible improvements, one idea that was floated out was separate the two. Separate the flood erosion control board from the inland wetlands agency. Because of the fact that there could be occasions or instances where they have divergent interests. The, in, in wetlands agencies, interest might be protection of the wetlands. And flood erosion control boards' interest might be, ah, well, let's modify the wetlands to make flood improvements. That did not, the division of the boards did not happen. So, right now, the EPC is the flood erosion control board. Craig's going to take it from here and chime in.
Oh, it is, gentlemen, sir. So, uh, as Jeremy well knows, so the stormwater management regulations, planning and zoning. It's a regulation in the zoning regulations. Uh, flood hazard zone regulations, planning and zoning. Uh, flood erosion control regulations, planning and zoning. So, all those things in terms of government development, use of private properties is all under zoning regulations, all under planning and zoning. When you look at all of our town boards, they get originating authority from some state law that was passed. And so, really, the state laws surrounding flood erosion control boards. We're providing, uh, the town an ability to do kind of massive, uh, infrastructure flood and erosion, like, you know, hurricane barriers and, and flood, and flood walls and dams and that sort of thing. That's the originating language that came down from the, the state is kind of oriented on that. You need a flood and erosion control board to be able to partake in those programs, which don't really come along anymore. So, that's, that's the originating part of the thing.
Do you want to talk about dredging? You want me to put you on the spot?
First, on the idea of, and, and this, I suppose I grew, grown a little cynical over time. Uh, when I was on EPC, we would get very specific with properties where we saw problems in watercourses. And we would have conversations with specific property owners to educate them, inform them, and compel them to take action.
I like that. That would be too big, yeah.
And it rarely happens.
You would make suggestions that would not be followed.
Yes, sir.
If, if I may though, the flood control board has powers that have been granted to them by the state. There was a bill that was passed that enhanced those powers that was passed and went into effect July first of last year. Now, it allows them to go in and take actions on residential properties. And talk with them about, you know, possibility of necessary land acquisition. I mean, it could get sticky, it could get ugly, but the powers there do exist. So, I mean, it's my mind, my way of thinking. A flood control board, you know, should serve as a, a, whatever, agency of the town, if you will, to get involved specifically with these situations where they know, where we know they exist. Okay, I don't, I wouldn't want to send them out like, you know, you know, police state or something. But, you know, where we know there are real problems and they're on private property. I would think that's the, the venue, if you will, through which, you know, that sort of, uh, action could be taken. That's, that's why I bring it up.
Take the way worth looking into.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Craig. Okay. Our next, um, our last speaker was Ed Gentile, Director of Public Works Board. Do we have any questions for him?
Yeah. Ed, you talk a lot, and I guess others have talked here, about sort of homeowner responsibility for, say, cleaning waterways in front of their house. Or just making sure stuff that they wouldn't think would flood away would, would actually be protected and not, not something that would flood away in a storm. Could you talk a little bit about homeowner efforts around sort of resiliency for their homes and things that they could do, right? One of the things I've picked up from this presentation is that there's not a lot that the town can do to make a substantial dent in flooding generally. Just given the amount of cost and money you'd have to expend and the limited impact in terms of, uh, water reduction or any of that. It's very clear that there's not all a lot that we can do in that regard. I think smaller projects to sort of target particular areas, like culverts that are undersized or, uh, I think the results of these studies that are going to be very helpful in terms of the things the town could do. But it just suggests that there's a lot of personal homeowner responsibility that individual homeowners need to take to protect their properties. Is there someplace that a homeowner could go to to get educated on things that they could do? Uh, even if the town does nothing, just to improve the resilience of their own property?
I'd love to tell you that there is a website. I'd love to tell you, you could plug it in somewhere and you could find it. And, um, some of the suggestions I, I've given and listed tonight were things that I've come across individually, not in one place. Um, or other items I've come across and instituted over the years in other structures. Whether it be blocking things up or, or raising things up. Some of the regulations that are instituted in planning and zoning with regards to building in a, a floodplain. Pretty simple. We're going to raise it above the hundred-year flood elevation and then that equipment should be protected. They're, they're pretty, it's simple ideas, but you have to go case by case. You have to look at your house. And I think I stated, is like, with these storms, I did it myself on our own structures. I made a line and I said, I'm building everything above that now, where I can. DPW Garage, I can't make all the electricity and stuff that's in the lower bays disappear. I, I, the lights that, that were underwater, uh, eight and a half feet deep, I can't do that. But what I can do though, is, and I did it when I designed the building, was I can disconnect the lower level from the upper level. So, now I still have a functioning facility above floodplain, but I was eight feet deep in water and it blew up. Most of the time I'd have to shut, we had to shut the whole building off. We reacted and we had the upper building to use as a, a emergency center for ourselves. But those are the things you, you have to plan for. Some of the things you, now that you know you flooded, okay, how did it get in? All right, what, what can I do to that location? Can I make it better? What equipment did I lose? Okay? If you've got an oil burner and it flooded these last two storms, hey, don't put it back a third time in that location. And, and it's sad. You, you hear the stories of the folks and, you know, I hear some of them, like, well, that's the only place for it. You know, there's other systems you can look at then, you know? So, there, there are other options that you should look into. Um, it, it's, it's sad to hear you say, John, that, you know, from part of this, this meeting that we've kind of tried to educate a lot of residents. I educated myself and some of the stuff what Mark was saying is you, you take away that there's really not a whole lot that we can do to stop the flooding, right? Everybody wants us to stop the flooding and it's, it's not going to happen. We can mitigate, we can protect, we can reduce, as Craig said, he showed you the difference. Uh, where you could spend millions of dollars and reduce the flooding by six inches. But if you're flooding three feet, that six inches is going to not make a difference to you and your property. And that's unfortunate.
Thank you. You're welcome.
You mentioned, uh, the fact that, that you can't go on people's property, you know, drains or why not, or, uh, address, uh, problems if you see them. But when you see them, do you have the ability or do you contact the particular homeowners? And if the homeowners need help, do you offer them help? Or do you look at the property, see the situation, say, oh, this is something, this is private property, this is something, you know, caseless?
It's, um, difficult for me to walk away from those things knowing what the impact is going to have upstream. And if this thing was to let go and get downstream, it's going to end up someplace else too. So, we do notify the neighbors when we do come across them. Um, I get notification from the neighbors to tell me when my facilities are, are backed up or have stuff. And, um, I appreciate that because I can't get around to everything. So, I appreciate the emails, the phone calls, the pictures. I mean, they're, they're worth millions to me because of the, the impacts it could have and what I can do to protect it. At the end of the last two big storms we've had, we did, um, bulk pickup around town. Um, I was very careful about what we were going to pick up because, you know, a lot of people lost refrigerators or utilities. If they could get it out to the street, we would take it away from them. Well, we would take it away for them. Um, I, I saw other towns that did this, um, a couple of years previous. And, uh, the street ended up like a, a dump zone. Every person's bulky waste was out. So, you want to be very careful. You want to be fair to the residents and I want to help them. That's one of the things that, um, you know, a character flaw, if you will. I need to help. I need, it's one of those things I need to do. There were opportunities there that I could do that for them. Um, so, and throughout the years, we do it on some of the dams down, the local dams. Asked the Good Wives, uh, friends of the Corm's Pond, they cleared out their dam once while. I always said, listen, I can't come on private property. You put it up by the curb and I will take that stuff away from you if this keeps the water flowing properly down that river.
One other, just quick follow-up, uh, you spoke about the flood study updates at Salt Box Bailey and Grove Street. Are there any other ones that you feel or areas that you also feel that are worthy of study? Because it, it looks like each, each place we look at, there's something that's a helpful mitigation strategy, uh, that we're looking at. So, are there any other areas of, of study that you think we should be checking?
There are other studies that are ongoing right now in other areas on private property that are being done. I'm, I'm aware of those. There are a couple of smaller areas that were hit hard. I did some, if you will, my own calculations to see if the pipe sizes were appropriate or, or should I institute a study in that area? And I haven't come across anything yet that's raised an eyebrow to me to have that, take it to a study by a consultant just yet. But some of the stuff that I've done, I've come across the pipes. We're making those changes now as we speak.
Thank you.
Sure.
Board, any other questions for Ed?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So, um, we also on the Good Wives River Road and the bed has come up really high. So, if we dredge that area, would the town help in picking up everything from there?
If, I'm, I'm sorry, if you... If, I'm sorry, if you-
The bed of the Goodwives River is very high. So every time it rains a lot, it floods. Her property floods, my backyard floods. So if we clean it, would the town help in picking up all the debris?
If you brought it to the road?
No. I think, I'm going to break it into two categories. If you bring debris, which I've limbs, garbage, anything that shouldn't be in the river, I will take that away for you.
This is a silt and stone.
But understand, with any type of dredging project, it is managed and monitored by the DEEP. They want you to test results. They want to make sure you're not just taking the soil and putting it in someplace you shouldn't and making sure that they dispose of it properly. So that would be a whole different process for that location.
The only, again, the only thing is, we dredge, the next storm comes and the silt comes right back down. That's, that's the hard thing. So that's why I think it has to be a project that is not just us doing our section. I really think it needs to be a town, somebody supervising it. Because we could just keep dredging this area because that's, the silt comes down.
I think when you and I spoke out in your property, we talked about that. We talked about river responsibility. We talked about the numbers too. That was one of those, eighty percent of all the rivers in town are on private property. Right? So the, some, the property doesn't have to take some-
Therefore, you don't have to take any responsibility. You have your little section here, it's your private property, but we're affected by everyone else.
Yes.
That's what the problem is. And I think there has to be responsibility somewhere so that we can all manage it together.
Cheryl?
I have a couple of questions. What else is there? First up, what constitutes a public-private partnership?
Funds coming from a public source and funds coming from a private source.
So when you said you worked with Grove Street, Telly Pond area on this piece of paper, 21 FOD came from the town portion. That becomes a public-private partnership? If someone is, let me just say, if someone is elderly, someone doesn't live on a stream or a river, and they have been flooded numerous times, is there any way the town can work with them as a private-public partnership?
To do what?
To help clean up the stream that's three doors down that flooded their house three doors up. Is there any way to do this? How did, how did you end up with a public-private partnership for Grove Street and the Tilly Pond area?
We looked at an area outside the flood zone that had significantly flooded during the two storms and identified that area as needing to have a study done. And we were approached by three separate business owners to make those contributions to help us with that study along.
So that was for this study?
Yes.
It's not to do the work?
No. Now, we haven't even talked about that part yet, the study is still underway.
Okay, okay, I didn't understand that. So now let me ask another question. You did the study on Salt Box, Coach, Bailey, Grove Street area, Comesina, Coachland, all of that. Why wasn't the study done over here where Cherry Street flooded so badly, Hecker Avenue flooded so badly? And within that area also, has the state fixed the problem underneath the thruway that brought the water, that continually brings the water down underneath the thruway from Stony Brook?
There, as far as I know, there's no problem with the culvert under I-95, other than it was inundated with water that it couldn't handle. It flooded I-95 and my garage from backwater conditions. And as far as studying the area, I think we spoke about the study that was done for that river over there and recommendations that were, were made and costs to go along with those. And I think Craig has spoken to that already and so has Jeremy.
So that wasn't part of your study this time?
I identified areas that are outside of flood zone that flooded significantly as abnormal conditions that we should look into as a town.
Okay. And so, I'm just trying to figure out, with people that are hurting and being flooded numerous times, is there any way the town can start to figure out how to help people out? You say you can't go on private partnership, you can't go on private property, but you, there's some way we have to work with this. There's got to be some way, like she said, somebody has to be accountable, somebody has to help. Some people aren't financially able to hire an attorney or to hire an excavator, to go in there with a dump, you know, a backhoe and scoop out trees and rocks and everything else that came flying down the rivers. Look what ended up I Goodwives River Bridge, that all those rocks down there weren't there until that storm came down. So, is there any way we as a town can help people that can't help themselves, basically?
Well, one thing that we have done is hired a consultant to help us figure out if homes should be elevated or if they would be better off being, being raised with a Z. And that's, that was a significant undertaking on our part and a significant contribution from the town to this consultant with very limited interest from people. So I'm, I guess I would have to ask you, Cheryl, what do you really think that everybody in town should, should do?
Well, I mean, there's one thing to say, yes, move your garbage cans, move your swing sets, move all your stuff when you hear a storm is coming. But it's another thing when you say, and you see the rocks and the, and the logs and the other things that are plugging up, riverbeds that are making it backflow. So, yeah, there's things that I think maybe if somebody said, I can't do this, I, I happen to have a stream on my property, let's just say. Could Public Works come in and help in a way to help them get that log or that tree out of that area?
I think it would require you indemnifying the town, for one thing. Because we can't send our people out there and risk damaging your property and having you make a claim then against the town, or then becoming injured or damage to our equipment. So you, the homeowner, at the very least, it would have to start with the homeowner agreeing to indemnify the town. After that, I'm still not sure it's a good practice because we've now provided a benefit to you taxpayer that we didn't provide to him taxpayer. And is that, so do we now have to go over to Mike's house and do it, you know? So that would have to be something that the administration would have to decide that, yes, that's how tax dollars should be spent.
And that's something that the town would have to decide because a lot of people live on watercourses and a lot of people don't. So asking the people that don't live on the watercourse to pay for cleanup on, for the homes that are on the watercourse has to be a discussion. That has to be something that has to be asked of everybody. That's the fair thing to do.
The river that's private property? The river that flows in our backyard is our private property?
Yes.
But to dredge it, we would have to get permission? Or to clean it up, to clean up the bed?
You would have to get permission because it's on your property.
How is it that public water can flow into these creeks that are going through people's property and you say, well, we can't touch it because it's private? Yet you have public water coming through. It happened across ways.
Well, I don't think what you're asking us to do is actually touch the water. You're asking us to touch what is in the riverbed, and that is your private property. And we can't go on your private property for all kinds of reasons, most of which, I think you would agree, are a bad idea. We can't just go on your private property. So, but I do hear your concerns and our board will think about if there are additional things that we can do. But I hope from this presentation tonight, and I thank you so much for staying with us for almost three hours, and I will, I'll give you, absolutely. You know, we've, I think we've covered a lot and we've uncovered a lot. And again, appreciate you joining us. Okay, what's your question?
Just a quick question. Two of the three studies you mentioned are coming to a conclusion, you said, I think at the end of October. Can you elaborate on what happens and they make their recommendations? How is the decision made, you know, which ones are going to proceed and does it get turned over to the board? Debate, debate? Is it public?
What's the general timeline?
Like a general kind of timeline for when the decision will be made and when the actual work will take place?
Oh, really good questions. So, and we're feeling our, the process out right now, but the first thing I'll do is review it with the first electman and the town administrator to get their, give them the information they need to come up with a decision to answer those questions you just asked, which, how we roll out. But I currently have, like I said, knowing I was going to need money for certain things, I used ARPA money to put aside for Salt Box, ARPA money for Grove Street. Bailey, I wasn't sure how it was going to go, so we, and you've heard some of the conclusions that it may turn out to be. Those are the three that I focused on. But the timeline now is, as soon as I'm given the go-ahead, I'm going to want to start to do the design work. A lot of the fieldwork preliminary stuff has been done already, which is good. But that'll institute now. I couldn't even venture a guess and I don't want to put that out there, when construction would start, because I think that's generally the first question that comes out. But give me, give me a couple of months to circle around to get an idea of what, how much it costs and a timeline to get everything done. And I think from speaking to the first electman, there is going to be a rollout of each one of the studies. I'll probably be doing this again for each study that we come across so that it can be put out to the public.
I hope the public will understand how important this is to the town, just by the fact that we had all of these people spend their time putting together this presentation. So it is very important to us and we are looking to address this on all different levels. Any further thoughts, questions? Okay, again, thank you so much for joining us and for the people that were impacted by the flooding last year. We, we feel for you. Okay. Did we have any public comments?
I didn't get any.
You don't get any, that's okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is Board Liaison Reports.
I, I have one for Blight, I'll be, I'll be wrapping, considering the hour. We dropped one property from the list, so where it was once 10, now it is 9, which we're happy to see. There are various stages. Some houses are being fined, some houses are being fined and having lien attached. There are two properties that have a, that are on our watch list, they're not yet being fined. And then there are two properties that are being fined, but we haven't attached the lien. So it's all part of a process and, and working, working well. The main piece of business that we discussed at the meeting was the idea of amending the Blight statute or adding to it to include commercial properties. This was something that was requested by Robert Salida, who was the Blight Prevention Officer, and we had a full discussion. And really, we talked about the idea that if, there was no specific commercial property that was being thought of, but the idea was that should there be one? We don't currently have that tool or that club in our bag, if you will. And the benefit of having that, so if there is a problem, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be stuck saying, well, we don't have a way to even address it. So there was good momentum for requesting this addition. We had spoken with Town Councilor, I had, who is of the opinion that we are well within our legal rights in creating such an amendment. And when it came to a vote, it was nearly unanimous. The only negative vote was a member who was concerned as to whether or not the town had the capacity to administrate Blight prevention related to commercial properties, which was certainly a fair point. I pointed out though, as we would discuss it and as the RTM would discuss it, that those would be issues to, you know, consider. But there was really unanimity at the, the, our level that this is a, an addition that we're interested in pursuing.
Thanks, Mike. Sarah, anything?
Yes, so the Thriving Youth Task Force last met on September 15th and the meeting dates have changed, rather, the times have changed to, from 8:00 AM down to 9:30 to 11:00 AM. It gives the individuals more time to discuss. And this past meeting was the first one of the year and there was a big report from the town's mental health task force. And, and also representatives from the schools talking about the things that they've done and plan on doing this year to help the students. One of the things that they're planning on doing as far as programming goes is planning a youth summit that the Thriving Youth Task Force will be looking to put together with that 40 or 50 students this fall and looking to gain their perspectives and understand what are the things that might be easy hits or things that we can do to help the students in town. And the next survey, we'll be starting to put together another committee because they, with the Drug Free Community Grant that the Thriving Youth Task Force rather received, the survey will need to be done every two years instead of every three. So it will next be put out in February of 2023. The next report that I have is for the Hillney Homes and Royal Building Committee. Our next meeting will be this Thursday evening and we'll be looking to present to the committee and have the committee approve the schematic design that has been put together. We are finalizing, the committee has not yet received it, we'll be receiving it soon. And, and it's been a labor of love between the construction company, mainly the architect, and also with the administration and the, all the important stakeholders to make sure that everything that we need is in those plans. So it's exciting and looking to present those to be approved by the Board of Education on the 11th and then hopefully this committee as we move forward. So, it's exciting.
Sarah, going back to Thriving Youth.
Sure.
I know that their original focus was on marijuana and alcohol.
Mm-hmm.
Have they considered changing that or adding to those substances?
So they reached out to the, to the Drug Free Community's grant, you know, look, they, they talked about, this is what's happening right now and, you know, we've addressed alcohol and we've addressed marijuana, but this is right now the big need and they said it absolutely falls within ways to help our students, so that's what they're addressing right now. And this is the biggest need, the mental health issues.
Okay. As far as, so no other drugs, we're not looking at?
They are absolutely looking at other drugs. For example, one of the things that we did this summer is we realized that there were students that were gathering over at Three Beach and I sat down with Parks and Rec and we figured out some things that we could do. We, Thriving Youth Task Force is going to be able to fund some additional patrols on, on Friday evenings so that try to reduce some of the usage over the By the Weed Beach area. So there are absolutely focuses, 100%. It is not being moved to the side, but the main focus right now is just seeing what we can do to help the students.
Okay, thanks. John?
IT Committee met on September 19th and very good progress. As you recall, we've got the four subcommittees that are meeting on four different topics. Jeff Kraus is leading the effort to, Adam to identify areas that he's already pointed out that really could be improved on, so just taking this problem list and trying to resolve them. They're working on four different policies right now, areas of vulnerability assessment and management, security incident response management, acceptable use policy for town IT equipment, and then a software procurement policy, none of which had been in place before. So I think- So I think that's going to be a great change. For outsourcing, we're looking at potentially some candidates that involve multi-factor authentication for email access, which I think would be good. Basic software maintenance and making decisions as to how those, how new software is procured and how to coordinate it across town departments. And then antivirus and security around all that. The third committee is around efficiency and Polly's working with Jeremy, who's actually serving on that committee as well, to do a survey to try and surface ideas for the town employees in terms of what can be done more efficiently. So we're excited about that. And then citizen engagement, we're still working on that. So I think very good progress. We meet again, I think it's being rescheduled to the twentieth, but that's when we'll meet again. So good progress.
Okay, great notes. Nice handwriting. Marcy?
Good, sure. Just wanted to give a, another plug for Mental Health Task Force. On October twenty-second is when the American Foundation for the Prevention of Suicide will be hosting their Community Walk. That is, registration begins at ten AM, start time is eleven. It's at Jessup Green in Westport. And we do have a pretty strong presence of Darian. We have a Darian team called Wave Strong. And there's many members of our community who have joined this team in our fundraising, in particular for memory of one of our students that we lost at Darian High last year. So I definitely want to give a plug to the community to get involved. Lots of members are going to be walking. It's a really beautiful event. It's a great memorial to anybody who's lost someone to suicide. So definitely chug in, plug in. You can go to AFSP.org, filter down to their Community Walk. You can donate, you can join, you can participate in any way you feel is appropriate. Another plug is for November nineteenth. We're planning a survivors day that will be held at Neuros and Presbyterian in the morning. More details to come, just kind of a save the date. And along with that, we are working diligently to design programming for several different age groups in terms of suicide prevention and mental health. Oxfordage Building Committee, go ahead.
So on that, the walk.
Yep.
How do they join your team?
So if you can, you go to the SP, AFSP.org Community Walk and you can actually put in the name of the team. If you want to join Wave Strong, you can put in the name and it will allow you to join that team. Okay? Oxfordage Building Committee, they meet again on, next week on Wednesday. Things are going great. Demo is complete on the old building, all particles are gone, clean slate. And they've started the foundation, the supports for the accessory dwelling. Great feedback from the administration, from the school, from the teachers, from the kids. Still totally in love with new building. One of the biggest problems they have is they don't have any green space to play outside right now, which can be a little frustrating for some of the younger kids. But they're working diligently and the teachers are doing a great job trying to find alternate space for that. We meet next week, staying on time, on budget, which is always the best news. So we are good to go.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request for bonding authorization for one hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for the Hanson Road Bridge repairs. And we have Ed Gentile here who-
You know, I'll take it. So you approved funding for this in terms of what? The Board of Finance wanted the option to bond this. So this is, bond authorizations have to start with the Board of Selectmen, be approved by the Board of Finance to go to the RTM. So you actually have already approved, approved an appropriation. This is giving the Board of Finance another tool. Go ahead.
Okay, so-
Sarah's got a question.
No, I do have a question. I didn't know you could bond design services.
You can bond pretty much everything.
Wow.
Why didn't we build that into the resolution just as an automatic thing?
Well, you know- Well, Jen and I have had the theoretical discussion about this as it relates to fire trucks. You know, I don't want to have to bring things to you guys twice. And, but we also, you know, are we, would we be stepping on the Board of Finance's toes if when we brought some kind of author, you know, appropriation to the Board of Selectmen to throw in a bond resolution there? So we-
Well, my question's a little bit different, just as a, as a, as a general matter, why wouldn't you just say in each resolution, what I'm going to do is I'm going to build in the authority for the Board of Finance to decide?
Because it's not your call to decide to bond it? And so that's, that's why, yeah, no, I know what you're saying, but that's where-
Just to give them that authority. In other words, I don't understand why they would, why we would put something there. They would go back, has to come back to us for that. But I'm going to say, this is what we want to spend. You guys decide how you're going to raise the money.
Well, we were, we were trying not to step on their toes by suggesting bonding from the start.
I'm not suggesting anything. I just want to give them a bar and a tie.
I, you know.
We'll look into that.
We'll look into it. We're having-
Take that under consideration. Okay. In the meantime, any other questions? No? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the request for bonding authorization of one hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for the Hanson Road Bridge repairs? John moves.
Wow.
Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next item is review and approve the minutes. Thank you, Ed.
Good night, Ed, thank you.
Good night, Ed.
Of the September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two special meeting. Any edits, additions, changes? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Mike moves. John seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, throw me off there, Sarah. Okay, next item is to review and approve the minutes of the September twelfth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. Are there any additions, edits, corrections? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, any agenda review? Any topics board members would like to see on a future agenda?
I thought the flood presentation today was superb. Very well put together and I'd like to just commend again everyone who worked so hard on that.
They really did. It was a tremendous amount of effort put in, so I will relay that. Thank you.
I can say don't overlook the lady in the corner.
Yes.
She's trying to avoid.
She's trying to hide, but Karen and Linda did a lot of heavy lifting.
They did a lot, yes.
She's like, stop clapping, I want to go home.
Okay.
And with them?
May I have a motion to adjourn? Mike moves, Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. Thank you, everybody.